Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, June 6, 2006. Would you please stand and join us in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we have a very large meeting tonight. It's not usual either. We have a pretty good substantial amount of information. The agenda review, we have quite a bit of items here that were added tonight for us to review, and I would probably say it's over fifty pages. And they'll start with items five, six, seven, and eight, some new conditions that were revised that staff went through. And what we're going to do after item four is we're going to take a fifteen-minute break to let us, give us a chance to review all these new items before we go ahead and vote on it, so we can get all the information available to us. So, and also, this is going to be a really long meeting for us, so give us a little bit of a break. Some of these products have a hundred conditions on them, so just bear with us a little bit would be great. So, the first item is citizens' comments. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to come forward to speak on an item that is not on the agenda?
I'm Bailey Neff. I'm the president of Minnesota Rentals. I would like to request the Planning Commission to remove Agenda Item Number Eight for several reasons. Neither I nor Minnesota Rentals received anything in the mail notifying us this meeting. Another condition is I've been informed by the Planning Department that to have a complete application, you have to have a project sign. And the project sign is perpendicular to all the streets that bounds the property, and that it also states the purpose and the time of a public meeting to hear the matter. There are no two-faced signs on Minnesota Avenue or on Carmel Parkway to designate this meeting. Ordinance Number 664 adopted Planning Development Area Number Twenty-Six. Planning Area Sixteen is part of this ordinance, and the property that is being developed by Minnesota Rentals is part of Planning Area Sixteen. Excuse me. One of the items that's being put forth tonight is the standards for that planning area. I have not been consulted about this or involved in the development of these standards, and I object to that. I have a letter of January 12, 2006, to Jeff Zilm concerning a petition that we have with one hundred and sixty-two signatures. Some of you on the Planning Commission may have received a copy of that; some of the new members have not. With that, the Item Eight was requested through Jeff Zilm to have everyone notified who were the one hundred and sixty-two petition signers. That has not been accomplished. I also object to the mitigated negative declaration dated May 2, 2006, for Carmel Estates. Thank you for your time. Do you have any questions?
Great, thank you, Bailey.
Thank you.
At this time, can we have maybe Heidi or Jeff, because Jeff's not here, just maybe address the signage issue?
Right, or we could defer.
Notification.
Yeah, would you rather we wait till we get to Item Eight, and we can talk about when we get to that item on the agenda?
Sure. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to come forward on an item that's not on the agenda? Okay, great, thanks. The first item is the consent calendar. The only thing on the consent calendar is approve the minutes of the Planning Commission meeting of June 1, 2006. That was a special meeting. Is there any comments? Go ahead, Art.
On page two, in the middle, it says a five-minute break was taken and the meeting resumed at 8:47 PM. And I know it wasn't 8:47, it might have been 7:47, I'm not sure, so we're planning to have to check that, but that's the only comment I have.
I had the same comment. And also, on the same page, it says the applicant, Don Threlco. I think that's spelled wrong. Just check it out. And I think that's all I had.
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve the minutes of the special planning meeting of June 1, 2006, with the addition of the comments we just made.
I second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those oppose? All those abstain? Okay. Four, one, Russell Pitkin, I mean, oh, I'm sorry, three, two, with two abstentions. Moving on to new business, Item Number Two is a public hearing. It's an application for a conditional use permit, approval to operate a dance studio, Dance Dynamics, in approximately forty-five-hundred-square-foot tenant space located at 700 Harvest Park Drive. The applicant is Nina Cook, and Mr. Strandberg's project, I'm going to have to abstain from this project since the owner of the building is a client of mine, and Art's going to take over.
As Don stated, this is conditional use permit number 613, and John Strandberg is the planner, so we'll start, John, with your comments.
Good evening, Vice Chairman, and members of the Commission. Dance Dynamics is requesting this conditional use permit to consolidate and move their studio to a larger suite within their existing building located here, with you got Guthrie going down here, and Balfour above, and Brentwood Boulevard down here. The largest concern staff had was the amount of available parking provided, but after careful analysis, it was determined that the intensities of all the uses on this site occurred at different times of the day, allowing for ample parking for all parties involved. Staff is currently working on a rezone of this site to accommodate uses similar to this in the future, and recommends approval of this conditional use permit. Staff is available, as well as the applicant, for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Any questions? I had a question relative to when we're talking about rezoning. What would we actually rezone it to?
We're just going to allow uses similar to this, meaning?
Uses?
Yes, just similar uses.
That was the only question I had.
Russ?
The only question I have, I know you talked about parking, two issues. The concept is there's one hundred and ten spaces required, eighty-four spaces available, but in your analysis, your analysis says that there'll be more people dropping off that will be there permanently, so we can justify the available spaces of eighty-four. Plus, on top of that, we also have the letter from Nina Cook on page two, where she says most of the dancers are dropped off by their parent, so parking is not impacted. So, with that being said, what would happen if we ran into a parking problem?
One of the conditions states that if we do come across any problems with anything in this future, meaning parking or any existing activities going on, we can bring it back to the Commission for either more conditions added on or revoking the conditional use permit.
Okay. Would the applicant like to say anything?
Hi, I'm Nina Cook. I'm the applicant, and I just wanted to say thank you for your consideration, and I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is anyone in the audience, would anyone in the audience want to make any comments relative to this? Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Four oh one. Russ, you want to start?
I review the... It appears to me that the intended use fits right in with the adjacent businesses, and the only issue I do see is the parking, and that's been addressed, and I agree with the time variance between the peak loads of the different businesses, that there shouldn't be a problem. And I like the idea that if, in fact, there is a problem, it can come back before the community development department and make changes then. So, I have no problem with the application for the conditional use permit.
Thank you.
I like this project. I think it's great that Dance Dynamics is growing and wanting to expand into the rest of that building. In regards to the parking situation, I've actually, I've been to pump it up a couple times, and there's a lot of parking on the street as well, so it hasn't, I don't see it as a problem, but of course, it's conditioned, so if there is a problem, we can address that later.
Was that weightlifting?
Oh, no. It's a play place for kids.
Oh, is it?
Anyway, but that's it.
No, I think that it's a good addition. It's nice to see businesses continue to expand in that area. It has been traditionally used for a lot of those types of uses before Sunset was put together, so I would definitely move to approve it.
I neglected to ask one question of staff on Table Two. The second name from the top is Dance Dynamics, which is their eighteen-hundred-foot facility, I assume, right now.
That is correct.
And then the bottom one is Dance Dynamics with fifty-four-hundred square feet. Now, we weren't talking fifty-four-hundred square feet, right?
No, it is forty-five. That was...
And that's what they'll have if we approve this?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I'm also in favor of this. I have nothing negative to say about this. I think it's a great addition to the city. It'll benefit everybody by expanding this facility, so may I have a motion?
I make a motion to pass Resolution Number 0646 to allow a forty-five-hundred-square-foot dance studio, Dance Dynamics, within the existing building located at 700 Harvest Park Drive.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Item Number Three is a public hearing. It's an application for a minor modification to Ordinance Number 772, limited to correct inconsistencies in the city zoning ordinance resulting from the expiration of the temporary prohibition on new movie theaters imposed by that action, and restore the city's 2004 zoning requirements relating to motion picture theaters and the following zoning designations: movie theaters as permitted use in, one, Plan Development or PD-6 Planning Areas, Regional Commercial and Office Commercial, and, two, Plan Development PD-16 SubArea A. The applicant is the City of Brentwood, and this is Heidi Klanser.
Thank you. This item is a municipal code cleanup. It's to maintain internal consistency of the code. On March 9, 2004, the city adopted an ordinance which temporarily prohibited the development of movie theaters in all zoning districts throughout the city until the city could gather information and evaluate the location of future movie theaters. And the ordinance was timed that upon completion of the downtown specific plan, the prohibition would expire. The downtown specific plan was approved in November of 2005, and with its adoption, the prohibition has expired. And so, to maintain internal consistency, we are now proposing to make that modification to Ordinance 772, and to reinstate the movie theater as allowable use in the two zoning districts where it had previously been permitted. And so, with that, I'm available to answer any questions.
Great, since this is a public hearing, is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on this item? Go ahead, Joan.
Hi, my name is Joan Douglas. I'm a resident of Brentwood, and I didn't fill out a speaker card for this because I didn't realize if I was going to ask a question, but I was on the Planning Commission when that ordinance came through, and I just wanted to ask a question. I thought there was also a time set, such as five years on that, and also how that's going to affect the Delta Theater. Those are my only two questions. Thank you.
Yeah, there was no time set on the adopted ordinance. The ordinance did change between the first and second read at City Council. I'm not familiar with what the initial proposal was, so when it went to Planning Commission on to the first read at the City Council, it may have had a fixed time period, but upon adoption, it actually did not have a fixed time period. And movie theaters are permitted use in the downtown zoning, which is what the downtown specific plan is. And there's no proposal to change the delta at this point, and we understand that they are continuing operation, so this wouldn't affect that.
Great, thanks. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to come forward?
Make a motion to close public hearing.
All those in, oh.
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Passes five zero. Okay, Jim, you want to start us off?
Yeah, I don't have, I mean, I really look at this as Heidi was saying, it's really a cleanup item. It was something that was supposed to have been taken care of, so I don't really have any issue with it.
Art?
I just have one on the addendum. Well, I have a comment, but first on the addendum on page one, second paragraph from the bottom, November 15, 2005. And I just want to clarify, even with this, with this being approved, are you saying that downtown can still entertain a movie theater?
That's correct. It is permitted use as well in the downtown.
Art, to get back to your question, you said the second paragraph from page one, the date?
It should be November 15, 2005.
Gotcha. Perfect, thanks. Any other comments?
No, I think it's great.
Julie?
I don't have any issues.
Okay. Russell?
Just a comment. I wasn't privileged to be at the last meeting when we talked about another location that a movie may go in. And in the past, I've been very excited about the downtown specific plan that we have here, a town center. And the town center where we can shop, dine, visit a library, go to the post office, take in a movie, go to the concert, whatever, and to me, an integral part of that plan is hopefully a theater. And I realize we're not addressing where a theater should be at this time as simply a technical issue of ending, or temporarily ending, a piece of legislation that terminated on its own anyway. So, without recognition that this is simply something that is sort of cleanup legislation, I have no problem with it.
Great, thanks. I'm for the resolution. Basically, we want to, I mean, I would love to see the theater downtown where it belongs, and it's already there. It's in the downtown specific plan. What we're doing tonight is saying, hey, this theater could be in two other places in town. One is the workshop that we saw, and the other one is right there where the Walgreens site is, you know? And that might not be the best spot that we think of, and as a planning commission, we could ask for this to come back and ask for a rezone of that to keep the theater downtown and not have it be anywhere else around the town. So, I would vote on this motion. Vote for it.
I'll make a motion if you wish. I recommend that we approve rezoning 0610 by adopting Resolution 0655, recommending approval to the City Council to modify Ordinance 772 related to the motion picture theaters.
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, Item Number Four is a continued public hearing. It's an application to develop approximately one hundred thousand two hundred and eighty-eight square-foot shopping center complex on approximately ten acres. The project includes a design review for the center and a conditional use permit request for a master sign program for the project. The project is generally located northeast of the intersection of Lone Tree Way and Empire Avenue. Staff has requested that the conditional use permit for the master sign program be continued indefinitely. The applicant is Wodgood Chartbusters, and this is Debbie Hill's project.
Good evening. This item was, as you mentioned, brought before the Commission on the May 18 meeting. The project in total included the adoption of a mitigated negative declaration, a rezone of the project site, design review, a tentative parcel map, a conditional use permit for an oil change facility, and the conditional use permit for the sign program. As you mentioned, both the design review and the conditional use permit for the sign program were continued, and what we're bringing forward for you this evening is the design review portion only. We did present this last meeting for you at the May 18 meeting, and what I'd like to do, if there's no objection, is the applicant's architect has a presentation they'd like to give, so in trying to save a little time, it might, if you don't object, let them go through their portion of the presentation.
So, you're saying that we should let them go through it, or?
Yes.
Only if we need it?
Only if you need it.
Okay. Great. Is there any questions?
Two questions. On page two of the resolution, Item Number C, the permit shall terminate on June 6, 2008, or 2007?
The reason this one was two years is to coordinate with the tentative parcel map that are approved for two years. You can certainly approve it for only one, but that is the reason why it was two years.
That's fine, then. We need to show two years from the effective date after the date.
Yes, absolutely.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I've got several questions.
Okay.
I don't know if you can see it on that site map, but on the third page of the plans, up in the right-hand corner, where it becomes like a forty-five-degree angle, there's a standard oil easement, and it looks like that's on a dotted line that runs down along the project. Does that standard oil actually follow what would be a wall there?
I believe that is off-site.
Okay, that is not, it looks like it's the dotted line, which I think is supposed to be a wall or something, but it doesn't, they're not one and the same, are they?
I think it's...
No, the wall's not on that easement.
Having visited that site, it appears that there's a wall that runs along the length of the east side of the property, and it's like a ten-foot wall. There's setbacks there that are three and four feet. Is that correct? Am I reading this right?
That's correct. It's actually not a wall. It is actually the exterior of the self-storage buildings.
Yes, but the building will be built about that far, the back of the building? And is it, in the plans that I've seen, and I don't know if you, we can probably ask the developer, are there any weird, I don't see any rear doors going towards that rear wall where you have a three or four-foot space back there. Is that true?
In general, when we see the design drawings, those aren't shown on the design drawings, but per building codes, in almost all cases, they are required.
It shows doors, but it shows them on the side rather than in the back. And the last one is, you're recommending that they eliminate the three-hundred-foot trees, the ones, the redwoods that could get three-hundred feet. Those grow at about five feet a year, I think, the redwoods, and they're beautiful trees. Why is it we want to get rid of those and put in something shorter?
It's more of a scale issue. Three-hundred feet is pretty tall when you put it up against a thirty-foot building.
Okay, that's all.
Great, thank you. Now, this project was presented to us, to all of us, I believe, last time we were here. Would you, does anyone want the applicant to go ahead and present the project to us again?
I'd like to be able to ask him some questions. I mean, if he can do a shorter version.
Yeah, we'll do questions.
Oh, okay.
If you wanted to have him present. Okay. Would the applicant like to come forward so we can ask some questions?
I'm Greg Steele, owner and developer of the project, and then I have Francis Chan, who's the architect, who will be more qualified to answer, I'm sure, some of these questions. So, here we are.
Great. Russell, did you have some questions you want to ask?
There's a provision, looking around at the trash containers, I, counting the trash containers, I don't see, there's not as many trash containers as there are buildings. And one of them is located between Buildings C and D, and it seems to be in a driveway that if you come in from Lone Tree onto, like, the Winco property, then you make a right, past Building E, that looks like it's a driveway going all the way down, and if you kept going without that trash container, it would provide access to that proposed retail development next door. But with a trash container there, that blocks what it seems to be the only access from your development to the next-door development, which is not keeping with the provision that you provide access to both adjacent developments. Is that, is there something that I'm not seeing there?
At least it was our understanding that there was no provision for cross-access easement through to the, is that the Martin?
That's the east, that's the east, Martin.
The east development, that the primary access would be through Fairview.
If I could further clarify that, the drive, the extension of Fairview Avenue, actually turns into private street at that location, and that is providing access to both of those, the potential future development to the east, and also this one. So, there is access provided.
I'm just reading Condition 13. It says that it will push our grant reciprocal parking access rights to the adjacent properties. So, I don't, that seems to not allow that, so I don't know.
Well, I think, I think the circulation through Fairview, like Debbie mentioned, will suffice, and it will still allow that reciprocal parking, because the distance is not very great.
But there would be no access from your property onto that adjacent property to the east?
Only through Fairview, correct.
So, there'd be none through yours?
Correct.
Because of this trash container? These setbacks, I don't know why it bothers you, the setbacks, the three and four feet, what use is it to have a three-foot setback? I mean, what's going to be, is going to be any functional use for that three-foot space? I mean, why didn't you go to zero lot line or whatever? I don't know what the alternative is.
First of all, the three-foot setback at Building B is an error that will be a four-foot setback. We're maintaining four feet minimum. The reason why we're going, not going, choosing not to go to zero, because if we went to zero, that back wall would be basically a very blind concrete block wall. We want to be able to allow some articulation on the backside of these buildings, and also provide for possibly a second means of egress if required. The way the planning modules have been developed, if each and every one of these stores were essentially leased out on the twenty-some-odd-foot module, only one means of egress would be required. A rear door would only be provided perhaps for the convenience of getting to the trash areas that would be located towards the back of each of the buildings, or the east property lines, in the case of the buildings along the east property.
Any other questions? Is there any other questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I just...
Okay, go ahead, Art.
Going further on the trash enclosures, I know that Condition, COA, Condition of Approval Number Three, you know, addresses that issue relative to the trash enclosures, but the one that Russ was talking about is right on the property line between yourself and the east, the east parcel, but it looks like they have a trash enclosure, I mean, it probably wouldn't go there, but that's where they're showing that it could be farther east, and what I'm wondering... be farther east, and what I'm wondering is why we couldn't find some way to reciprocate and push that trash enclosure back, and if applicable, have them back-to-back, that would be, that would be something Russ is addressing, where it would open that area up. Should we have some reciprocity between the two developments?
If I might answer that, the site plan that you're seeing is only conceptual in nature for that property to the east, and there could be some, there could be alterations to that site that we could certainly factuate that change.
Great. Hi, Jim.
Debbie, on, if we're looking at the penetrations coming in on that piece of property to the east off of Fairview, is that sufficient, just the proposed aspect? So in other words, is that more than enough for them to...
I would certainly think so. They would probably, unlikely to be provided access off of Lone Tree Way due to the proximity of the driveways, but I think that would be more than sufficient for a parcel of that size.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I just wanted to point out one other item. There was some discussion last time about the, sort of, the pedestrian connectivity within the project. The landscape plan, which is the fourth exhibit in the packet, although very lively and almost the same shade of gray, you'll notice that, especially on the portions on the south of Fairview, you'll see that there's the decorative paving connections along the south side of Fairview, and also across the plaza midway between Fairview and Lone Tree. And in addition to that, addressing one of Larry Cannon's comments about providing a pedestrian link between building G and building A, if you would turn back to the architectural site plan, you'll notice, again, you'll have to look very closely, along the west side of the west property line between G and A, you'll see there is a walkway that has been now included. And finally, as far as the trash enclosures and the number of enclosures, that was worked out with community development to locate the enclosures. There was a comment the last time about moving one of the enclosures away from building F and F1. That enclosure has been basically mirrored into the middle bay of parking. I have not taken that by for review. The reason why it was on the other side, they felt that that was a more accessible location for their trucks coming in at an angle. So I would like to at least request that the trash enclosure in the middle of the parking field near buildings F and F1 at least be reviewed by the waste management before we settle in on that.
Did you have any locations shown for shopping carts? Or were that you anticipate shopping carts?
We don't anticipate not because of the size of the type of tenants that would be attracted to this center.
Great.
Thanks.
One question.
Oh, go ahead, Russell.
One of the conditions, condition 25 says the design of the wall is going to go behind building A on the north side. Just in discussion at the last meeting, it was, they were talking about putting a gate in that so the neighboring community could walk through and access your property. Has there been any change in that thought, discussed with you?
No, there hasn't.
Do you have any thoughts on that access to the area behind building A?
Well, I think, like the police department pointed out, I think it's a security issue. And, you know, it becomes a condition, I don't think we, I guess we have no choice. I'm not sure, because of the depth of this project, how much pedestrian access will be utilized. It's a very deep parcel. But I think that no matter how well we illuminate it, how well we put cameras, I still think there would be vandalism back there.
Be a what?
Vandalism in the rear, and not only just our parcel, but also the Winco parcel.
Yes. I tend to agree with that. I just wondered if there'd been any discussion after the last meeting.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks. You know, we, this is a continued public hearing, right, Damian? So we can still open the, we don't even need to open the public hearing because it's still open. Is that correct? Okay, is there anyone in the audience that would like to come forward?
My name is Karen Ragge. I live at 2321 Wendy Springs, across Lone Tree from this project. The first thing that I want to address is what Russell talked about was the access. So the only access that they're going to have into the Winco shopping center area is going to be Fairview. Is that correct? Can anyone answer that question?
Have you looked through the chair? The vehicular?
Vehicular, correct. Vehicular.
Well, Winco has an entrance directly off of Lone Tree.
Right. No, but I mean going into there, from this project into that one.
No, there are drive aisles that are open.
The two, the one on top, where, I don't know if it's building A, that one that goes across, is going to be accessible with a vehicle, and the one down here at the bottom is going to be accessible with a vehicle. Is that correct? So there'll be three that'll go across.
Four.
Four. Four. Four. Okay. That, I just wanted to get that clear. And then, as far as I know, that I had brought up about the pedestrian walkway in the back to the apartment complex or whatever, but after talking to the police department and to Paul Martin, I have to agree that that's not a good idea. If they're going to have to walk around there, they'll probably have to go all the way through Winco to the Best Buy thing and come, because I have looked back there extensively, and it is very, there's just no way. You know, people will be writing on the walls, kids will be, I mean, they're already coming through the black wrought iron fence from the field. So I think that it would not be a good idea to have walking access back there. Thank you.
Thanks, Karen. Go ahead and state your name and...
Yeah, my name is Michael Alfonos. I am the owner of the property adjacent to this project, and I have only one question. Now, the concerns are about the vandalism and the, and the problems they're going to have with the tenants of the multiple units. Now, on the other side, my other 15 acres is the same zoning as Winco and the other. Have you ever thought about it? Isn't it the same? Am I going to have the same problem? And if this is all, why did you put that residential in the middle of all that commercial? Why did you think about it before all this came to it? Thank you.
Thanks, Michael. Is there anyone else?
Can I make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes 5-0. Russell, you want to start us off?
Having gone through, I've gone through the architectural drawings, and I like what's presented, and I also like the suggestions made by the Cannon Design Group, and I've got a question if I can ask staff through the chair. I got one page of the Cannon Group suggestions, and the top design or the building seems to be, I think it's building F, but I don't find it for any of the other buildings.
It would be implied that this would be done for all the...
That was going to be my question. Do, are the changes that he's recommending here going to be followed through on all the other buildings in a similar fashion?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Also, when you're driving down, it's an observation when you're looking at the plans and looking at the buildings, when you're coming off of Lone Tree Way, turning into the Winco property behind building E and F, and F1 and G, that E and F are long, blank walls with no trellises, no windows, no rear doors, appears, nothing. And then in reading through yours, staff reports that you put in a condition of approval that this be addressed and some modifications made.
That's correct. I believe the condition reads to carry around the architectural details that are on the front of the buildings to the sides and rears.
On page 11, you're at the 11th page, and I'll find it here, of the plans. I numbered mine, and they're not numbered on yours, so it's building, building B, and perhaps that's been addressed. Are those all doors, roll-up doors? It's building B, I don't know what else to say.
Yes, it is anticipated by the developer that that will be occupied by Tire Store, so those are roll-up doors.
And the east elevation shown at the top of that page is similar to the west elevations on buildings E and F, I think it was. That, this building, I assume, will have a big wall behind it?
That is, backs up to the Acorn Self-Storage Facility.
Okay. And staff has no problem with a space this wide between a rear of a building and a 10-foot wall?
They, they do need some area of space in order to do maintenance on the building itself, so, you know, painting and, you know, any, I don't know.
So you have no issues with that?
No.
The number of trash enclosures that, when you go through all of them, they just seem to be not sufficient number to service some place that large with that many stores, that many users, that many, hopefully, customers, especially when A, building A, which is going to be a huge store, is going to take up a lot of need for containers. And if I make a motion, I would ask that we, not only, I think, condition number 20, condition 3 indicates that the, they have to be, the locations have to be to satisfaction of the community development and public works department. I'd also put in there, the location and numbers have to be satisfactorily agreed upon by both department heads, because number, the number more than location seems to be bothering me. There are just not enough of them, even if the locations are ideal. I've got several issues on the buildings that, the west elevations on the driveway, they're so plain, but that's been addressed by staff, that that's in one of the conditions. And you hit on earlier, if, I don't think we know the tenants of all of the buildings yet, even business there, the building A, and it's possible that carts may be necessary in the conducting of their business, and I'd like to see a condition put in that if a business or tenant is selected that uses carts, that prior to issuing permits, that a cart corral is located somewhere near the building that's intended to use carts. I just think it should be in there as sort of a, just in case of, sort of thing. Those are my comments.
Great, thanks, Russell. Julie?
I don't have much more since our last meeting, so, and a lot of the things that I had issues with, Russell has already addressed, which is great. Makes it easier for me. And the pedestrian walkway to the back of the building A has already been addressed as well. So I think it's been conditioned with all of my issues, so I'm okay.
Great, thanks, Julie. Art?
I, Russ brought up a good point relative to the number of enclosures. I was looking at amending number 3, addressing the enclosure in the parking, parking lot itself, but the number of enclosures, I also think should be there. I'd like to ask Lieutenant Strach, though, if he could address, I know we did this last time, Brian, but I think we need to have some kind of gate up on that north, that north wall. Even if it's locked, we should have some kind of gate there, because at a point in time, with the housing that's going to be up there, the multifamily housing that's going to be up there, I'm thinking that there's going to have to be some kind of access through that wall, and even if we don't open it up right now. So I'm in favor of putting, make, amending condition of approval number 25 to also state that we should look at putting a gate in there.
Well, at the meeting which this was discussed before, there was quite a discussion about this, and as I recall, there was a desire to have a gate potentially for those residences to the rear of that wall, and the discussion was about having a gate in place that could be designed such that, with the approval of the chief of police and community development, that we would be able to secure that if necessary.
I'd like to ask staff a question on condition number 26. We talked about this last time, and in looking at the site plans, building number A is not addressing condition number 25 relative to, or excuse me, condition number 26, where it says additional architectural details incorporating some design features utilized on the front facades of the building shall be carried around to the rear elevations and on the side elevations, and nowhere is building A addressed, so we're talking about all the other buildings.
Yeah, I, this is a very strange coincidence, but I thought of that myself and looked at my version of the staff report earlier today, and it was in there, and now you're looking at this and it's not in there. So I don't know what happened, but we can certainly address that.
We can, we could amend it. We could amend 26 to that effect. And then, another question for staff. Russ brought up about the shopping carts. Is that something that we need to address right now, or can it not be part of a condition of approval for whoever?
We can place a condition on this project that any tenant, when they come in for their tenant improvement plans, requires cart storage, that they be required to accommodate that on the site that utilizes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, great. Jim?
Just to follow up with what Art was saying, relative to the shopping corral, do we have sufficient parking that if it actually had to, if we really had a full-blown cart retail use on building A, that it wouldn't be detrimental to the parking in the area?
As the commission may recall, when we did the rezone for this, we reduced the parking calculation, and with all the reciprocal parking with Winco and this site, I don't see that as ever being an issue.
And when we're looking at the reciprocal parking, clearly the reciprocal parking is the fact that somebody could park on either parcel and then walk up to that particular location.
Correct.
But the division between, as we get further to the south on building A, what would they, are there, there is no actual break then between the front, the facade on building A, the line of trees all the way down to just the south portion of building G?
That's correct.
So you couldn't, you really couldn't cross there with a shopping cart or anything like that? You'd be walking through a median strip, basically?
Well, there is a walkway along the portion between building G and building A.
Right. The, because that's been said a couple of times, and I guess I'm just missing, where is that walkway between Building G and Building A?
Francis, the walkway is exactly on the edge of the pavement along the drive aisle? Yes.
It, it just doesn't cross the street. It's not shown on the street, so Larry Cannon's conditions would overrule that. I mean, the conditions, Larry.
Overall, my experience, I mean, again, it was one of the comments that I'd made before, is that this is a, this is an extremely difficult-shaped property for the size and scope of this project to, to work with. I quite frankly don't find, you know, we're tending to use this pedestrian-friendly, I don't consider this pedestrian-friendly at all. I consider it kind of an interior, you know, strip mall that act, you know, that's accessed off of the road. We've got between Buildings C, from curb to curb, between Buildings C and Building F, we basically have 63 yards. So if you think of standing on a football field and trying to cross that, that, that area, so the addition, and I'm glad to see that the architect added the walkway between F and C, because I really, quite frankly, as cars come off of, what is, does anyone know what the speed limit is off of Lone Tree? Here, are we at 35, or?
I think it's 45.
45.
You could double-time it across there.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. Between Building D and E, other than the walkway out front, people are gonna be really hesitant to walk straight across from Building D to Building E, just because of the fact that as people come off of Lone Tree at that kind of a speed, you know, if you've got a child in hand going across there, there's no, absolutely no protection. And it's a major in-and-out as it relates to the, to the complex. My experience in talking to a number of different citizens, I said, "Well, when you go to Slaton Ranch and you go to Target, and then you decide that you wanna go to Barnes &amp; Noble, what do you do?" They say, "Well, I get back in my car and I drive to Barnes &amp; Noble." So when we start looking at the defined, you know, planning and, you know, putting buildings in various areas, clearly, I think, the less traffic that we can create, the less opportunities for people to have to get back into their cars, the better. I'd like to address a little bit on the landscaping. One of the things that, that has always concerned me is that we're tending to use as a standard, and I understand, the 15-gallon trees interior. And I think that's fine for the interior, but quite frankly, I would like to see on some of the exterior, particularly along Lone Tree and coming in and in the major kind of design element, which is sitting in the very middle, to literally go to some box trees. So we actually have something that's a little bit more formidable. You know, it's one thing if we're looking at a couple hundred 15-gallon trees, you know, that are sitting in the median strips. But when you come walking into a, you come driving into an entrance, it's nice to see something in a shorter period of time would, would get considerably larger. And I understand the issue relative to the redwood trees, though. Quite frankly, there are some wonderful retail centers in Danville that have 300-year-old trees and, you know, 200-foot tall trees hanging surrounded by, you know, providing a tremendous amount of shade, and people really enjoy that. So I don't have the, the same issue as it relates to pulling out the redwood trees. Those are, those are the major comments I have.
Great, Jim, thanks. Most of my comments were the same as last time for this project. I think the circulation is great. It's much better than Slaton Ranch. You don't have to drive out in the street to get back to go over to the other side. It flows really nicely. The trash enclosures, I did count them. There is quite a bit, but I think condition number 3 addresses it, and also, maybe adding Art's comment about it. And I think we should also remember, too, that you, you can have the trash company have more frequent pickups, and sometimes that happens. And if there's ever problems, the trash companies get notified, and then the owner gets notified as well. So just food for thought. And then the architecture, I agree completely with Larry Cannon's comments. Most of all, though, Building B needed the most articulation, and I agreed with the architect that that's the reason why you have that space in the back is for the articulation. You just watch out for the exiting doors and the relationship to property lines and for code. Let's see here, pedestrian path, it's all been addressed in Larry Cannon's comments. The only thing that I'd like to add is that pedestrian gate in the back, I drove around because I think Paul Martin was here last time, and we were talking about, you know, he did not wanna see, you know, a lot of people back there because he owned the Winco Shopping Center site. And I went around and looked at a bunch of different shopping centers to see if there ever was a condition like that, and is there any problems? And I found one, it was Albertson Shopping Center, where they have that EVA through the back there where all the residents could come back through there to go shopping. And has there been a problem there, Mr. Struck?
Occasionally, we do have problems back there, but in that particular case, a police car driving on Walnut can very quickly get to that corner. In this case, it would be difficult for a patrol car to get back into that corner without being seen very easily by anybody back there in that parking lot.
Okay.
So there is, in my mind, a big difference.
So if there was a key there, I mean, a gate with a code, would that suffice for you, and maybe some additional conditions that we had talked about with the Community Development Director and the police to review? If that was an added condition, would you feel that that would work in your eyes?
We would like to see a way to seal that wall if it became necessary.
Okay.
So...
Okay, great. And then the other issue that I still saw there was the back-to-back compacts along Building C here, A1, and then also the bike racks. I didn't see any bike racks. I think you need 5% of the total parking spaces. But other than that, that's all my concerns.
Through the chair, I have two more comments for staff. I think Jim brought up about the, Jim or Russ brought up about coming off Lone Tree and turning into the shopping center. And is it feasible to put some kind of traffic calming in the entryway that would, would work to, you know, to alleviate any car being able to really speed through?
The project, as it stands right now, does have enhanced paving, which tends to slow people down a little bit. It, it also has a deceleration lane going into the, the center, so that people do have the opportunity to slow down, and they're not trying to get out of the way of somebody coming up at 45 miles per hour behind them.
Okay. And then secondly, Jim's comment about the box trees. I understand on Lone Tree, now, is it feasible to put those on the west side, too?
Along the...
Along the, the access, on the west side of Buildings A, G, you know, where the, that...
It's, if the Commission desires that, it's certainly feasible, it's just more expensive for the developer.
Just, I'm just looking at the trees. It's a lot of trees, and that will be an impact, but if that's, I'm wondering if there's a certain amount of trees that you'd like to... Certain trees, or all the trees, or...
Like, what about 50%?
Actually, taken these two coming into the entrance, and then these right here around where the little park area is.
To do, to do what with those trees?
Just make them box instead of 15-gallon. They'll be, it's a more mature tree. It's a bigger tree to start out with. In a shorter period of time, it will look like what they're supposed to look like when we get to see them.
Is there a condition that that addresses that?
So you're talking 12 trees right now? Is that correct?
Four, five, six. A little bit more than that. Right? Twelve, yeah, it's actually 12.
Plus all those trees.
Yeah, and then just around where the, where the little promenade area is in the middle.
Those, that's not dressed in one of the...
No, it's not.
Okay.
Yeah, because this is the major area which people, if they're traversing from C to F, you know, walking across there. It's just to try to get a little bit more maturity earlier on than the 15-gallon trees.
Okay. Last comment? You have to beat a dead horse. I have problems with the, trying to make this a walkable community when it's not. You drive everywhere you go. Like you said, if I, if I go into Mimi's, I drive to anyplace else, and because it's such a huge shopping center. Winco is pretty much the same thing. If I'm in Winco's, wanna go to Golf USA, I get in my car and I drive over there. I don't think we're gonna have, trying to make this a walkable community and then put a big gate in that back wall where people will dead-end behind a store that's gonna be closed at night and, and become just, in my opinion, just be a playground for whoever wants to use it as a playground, rather than access to a beautiful walking, walking community or a walkable community. This isn't it. Jim, Jim made the point. This is not a walkable community. It's, it's a sort of piecemeal attempt to make it, but one gate doesn't make it walkable. And if I had my way, I would say, no, just build a wall, and that, it's a wall. But I think one way to address it, whenever the motion is made, and I'm willing to make a motion, in condition number 25, it says the design of the wall shall be reviewed and approved by the Community Development Director prior to grading permits issued. I would say make it the Community Development Director and the Police Department prior to the grading. That way, they have to come to a consensus, because they're the ones that have to put up the problem later on in life, as well as the owner of the store. So I'd like to just have the Police Department included with the Community Development Director. And between them, if they wanna put in a gate with a lock, fine. If they talk it over and wanna put in a wall, fine. But whatever the two of them come up with, I think would be a better solution than what we probably could mandate right now. So that's my comment.
Great, I'll, just to add, one of the things we talked about last time, the reason for that opening is that there are a bunch of residents back there. And if that gate was closed off, then the people who live back there would have to walk all the way out to Empire, down Empire, and then along Lone Tree, then all the way back through.
That's a decision the Community Director of Development and the Police Chief can make, rather than us mandating either yes or no right now.
Okay.
I'll make a motion then, to approve resolution number 635 regarding design review number 529 for the 10-acre development known as Lone Tree Town Plaza, with the following changes in the conditions of approval. I'd like to amend number 3, condition number 3, to include... That the trap, that the trash enclosure locations, including the, including the enclosure in the, shown in the parking lot on the site plan, and the number of trash enclosures be to the satisfaction of the Community Development and Public Works Department. So that would be amendment, amend number 3. I'd like to, I'd like to include, I'd like to amend number 7, condition number 7, to include a sentence that says that, that specifically the trees fronting Lone Tree Way and the trees through the entrance off Lone Tree, including the two trees past the Plaza area, be of a box size rather than 15-gallon. I'd like to amend number, condition number 25, to include the design of the wall shall be reviewed and approved by the Community Development Director and the Chief of Police prior to grading permit issuance. And I'd like to amend condition number 26A to include Building A relative to the rear elevations and Building A relative to the side elevations. And then finally, I'd like to go ahead and add condition 28, that says that the, the location of any shopping carts, the location of any shopping cart storage areas relative to each tenant shall be addressed within the tenant improvement plans when they're presented and should be subject to the review by the Community Development Director. And I think, I think that covers it.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, I have a motion and I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That's a 5-0, congratulations. Okay, the, the next item is number 5, but we're gonna take a 15-minute break, because we have 15, about 50 pages or so of additional agenda items that were given to us about 10 minutes before the meeting, which we never like to see, but we wanna review it and understand it since we're gonna vote on it. So we're gonna take a 15-minute recess. So we'll start back here at 8:20. So, we'll start back here at 8:20. Okay, I think we're gonna get started, you guys. Yeah.
Yeah, it was good.
Nice.
I'd like to have pointer.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Well, what was the kick? Because I looked over his shoulder, I couldn't tell what he had.
Okay. Thanks for bearing with us. Okay, we're gonna move on to item number five, which is a public hearing. It's an application for a tentative subdivision map to subdivide the approximate 35-acre site into 59 single-family residential lots, a 1.29-acre park, and accompanying open space and one remainder parcel for an existing, existing residence located south of Lone Tree Way and east of Smith Road. A negative declaration for this project has been prepared pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act to assess, to assess potential environmental impacts. The applicant is Passport Homes, and this project belongs to Jeff Zoom.
Yes, good evening, Chairman and Commission members. Tonight before you is this project. It's located, this is Lone Tree up here. Down here, Meritage is working on project down over here. Suncrest Homes has the majority of this project here. There's also a plan in for Last Ranch going right in there. The rest of these are other properties that probably will follow as development occurs out here. The canal, it borders a canal, or not the canal, but the drainage ditch down here along the southern part, and like I said, north part. The project doesn't front onto Lone Tree, because there's three pieces or four pieces of property up here that are not part of the project, but will have access through the project when this gets developed. There is one, one, one thing I want to point out here, because I talked about it in, in the tentative map, there is also a remaining parcel where there will be an existing residence on here, that is, that will stay, and there will, and they currently have access off of Smith Road. And I talked about it in the staff report, that we want to have them switch their access over to either A Street or this interior street on the develop, or in, within the development here. However, they're, they're set up to come off of, off of Smith Road. So, I wanna, have to add a condition in there that they work with us to find the best location that they, that we can come up with, to keep them having access onto, onto Smith Road. We want to work with them. So, at the end of this, when whoever makes the motion, we need to have that included, that they come back and work with Engineering and Community Development to provide them access to where they currently have access to, at Smith Road. This is a subdivision of about 35 acres. It is for 59 lots. With that one remaining lot, there's a park being proposed down at the, the southern end of it, which will have access to the trail system that runs along the East Bay Muds Aqueduct, that runs along east-west around the entire city. There are some smaller parcels in here that are for trails. Like I said, there is these parcels up in front here that are not part of the project. The, the one issue here, there are no, it meets the zoning. There's no zoning concerns here. It's zoned out there in R1E, and it meets the standards there for, for the R1E district. There is one lot, which is Lot Number 41, which sits right here, that does a butt, this larger one-acre parcel, and the density transition requires it, it be a minimum of 15,000 square feet when you, when you, but, I'm saying, I'm sorry, 20,000 square feet when you butt a one-acre parcel or larger. We do have a letter from this owner here that is, he's okay with that, and this lot is a little over 15, or 14,000 square feet right there. So, that, this map will have to go on to the council, but it requires your recommendation that this meets the intent of the density transition guidelines or policy. There are no homes. This, these can be all custom lots, or sold off to individuals or groups of individuals to build their own homes on it. So, there's no design before you tonight. It's just the map itself for the, for the 59 lots. There was an egg deck done for it. There is also, kind of a, as you took your 15 minutes to go over your homework there, there's a whole bunch of changes to some conditions of approval, and also to the, to, a small change to the resolution, one of the resolutions in your packet. And I have, what I've done is I've taken the entire conditions of approval out, separate. I have bolded the changes that we are making, and this is the, the set, unless you make changes to it, this will be the set that will be attached to the appropriate resolution when you guys are done making your motion. So, I've highlighted those, those changes, which were some changes that occurred after the packet went out to you folks. So, if you have any questions about that wording, that, and they're all bolded in here, I'd be more than happy to either answer them if I can. I know that we have, well, I thought we had Engineering over here. And Art Rec is also here to assist you if there's some questions that you may have of them. Most of these conditions were last-minute conditions that were worked out with Engineering and the developer and Community Development. So, with that, I will turn it over to the Chairman. I know that the applicant is here. I don't know if he has a presentation or not for you, or if, but I know he's here available for any questions that you may have.
Great, thanks, Jeff. Any questions for Jeff?
Hi.
Why don't you go ahead, Jim?
Jeff, I had a question for you. When, when we're talking about policy, further requires the map to be reviewed and approved by the City Council, is there a threshold for that? Is it, is it based upon size? Is it specifically conditioned based upon the land used policy?
What, the density transition policy?
Yeah.
It's for any lot, any exist, or any created lot that butts an existing lot that is one acre or larger, the general plan requires that that newly created lot be a minimum of 20,000 square feet.
Okay.
This lot is not.
Right.
It's less than that. So, we have, you, you make the recommendation that you, you, because we have a letter from that applicant, or from that property owner, who does not object to the property, or if we didn't get a letter from him, and his property could be developed the same size lots as this one, that would be okay as well. Those are the two criteria that you have to allow this to occur.
Okay, okay, next question.
Great.
You asked that a condition be made where the owner of a certain piece of that existing property there
Yeah.
meet with the Director of the Community Development. Is there a lot number or an address number for that?
All that is, is known as remaining parcel.
Remaining parcel?
Remaining parcel, yeah. There's no lot number assigned to it, it's just a remainder parcel.
That is, is that a parcel or a house?
There is a house actually there now. There's existing residents live, has his house and barn and stuff on this property.
Okay.
Yes. And he lives there, currently lives there. And like I said, his access is set up to come off of Smith. We're, we're asking him to come down to A Street or E Street, and he's now asking that it be left the way it is, and we want to work with him to try and achieve that.
Art?
I have one question. When I was reviewing this, condition number 50, I questioned, it was a question on the height of the sound walls, on the old, on the old Exhibit A.
On the condition approval, number 50?
Yeah, but it was on the old ones, not the ones that we just received from you.
Okay, well, that, that condition didn't change.
Yeah.
Unless I'm looking. That's where you...
Okay, okay, I'm with you. Question is, what's the height of the sound walls?
Typically, for noise, they run anywhere from six feet or higher. I would say that the sound wall along Lone Tree, I think, of all... I would say that the sound wall along Lone Tree, I think, Paul, I believe those are running anywhere from eight to twelve feet, the sound walls along, currently being used along Lone Tree, like they...
Eight to twelve.
Eight to twelve feet, yeah. So the wall that is going to be constructed along Lone Tree will run probably in that same range. The walls, as we're asking, is that they come down into the development would be substantially shorter, but a minimum of six feet.
My question is, it's not addressed, that is not addressed?
The height is not addressed, no, because we're not really sure what it will be.
But shouldn't we condition it now? Shouldn't it be conditioned?
Well, it all depends on the sound study and what the noise is out there.
So you'll come back to us with that?
We can condition it, the height, come back, you sure?
Or be in condition too. Okay, I got it.
I think, aren't there existing residents on Lone Tree right now? I don't know if that's going to be, I don't know if that'll be an issue on Lone Tree unless they sell their property.
You talking about these up here?
Jeff, could you address that?
For the wall, I mean, I'm just...
These folks that are up here, these three, when this development occurs, these three parcels will not have access out to Lone Tree. They will have to have access from this court and into here. There's an easement up here that allows access back to here. And then this one comes off the court and this one comes off the court.
Do they have access to Lone Tree now?
I believe they do. Yes. But we're gonna be, we're gonna be rerouting the sewer and water to come down into here and the access along here will be given up.
Great.
Can I ask him?
Sure, go ahead.
So will we require a sound wall for existing residences that are not being, I mean, we are not touching them, right? Is that correct for those?
Well, as part of, as part of the mitigated or the RGMP requirements, the improvements that the developer will be doing along here, that sound will be part of that improvement.
What you're saying is they don't have one now and seem to live with it, so will I put one in?
Well, yeah, and basically, yeah, these are existing residences that you don't...
Yeah, and through the chair, because we would be adding new homes that would potentially have noise, we would need to ensure that those new homes meet our acceptable noise standard of sixty. So that in itself would trigger the need to mitigate, which is usually through a wall. So we would work with the existing residences, the front Lone Tree, as part of the relocation of their existing driveways which go directly off Lone Tree, putting a wall in the front of their residences, we would need to work closely with those parties.
Great. Any other questions? I had one question, Jeff. On that last parcel there, where it says last parcel...
Oh, this one.
On B Street, you have a road that goes right up to it. What's planned there on that last parcel there? And is there any access, is it just access to that parcel?
There is a plan, a plan in, in community development right now that has all this land, right, and I think it comes down, includes all down to here.
It's just a lighter...
Just the top.
Yeah, just the top, there you go.
This one right here. There is a plan for us to subdivide this property here and he will have access off of this road stub here that will bring him access into his property and it is lots that he's gonna create.
Okay, and if I read, if I read condition fifty right, then the improvements along Lone Tree will go across that lot as well? Okay. Great.
I believe so.
Okay, great, thank you. No further questions for me. Would the applicant like to make a presentation?
Don Babbitt with Passport Homes, seven-nine-five-zero Dublin Boulevard, Dublin, California. We agree with all the conditions of approval and maybe, Jeff, can I borrow your pointer there for a second? Maybe just to clarify a little bit more on Lone Tree. In designing our project, actually, this is a twenty-foot strip of property in here and then a little bit additional property here. We designed that site plan, part of our negotiations with these property owners along here is to try and offer them that twenty-foot strip of property. We give it to them, do a lot line adjustment with them and drop them utilities to their property in return for them giving us Lone Tree right away and the ability to landscape that and put up a sound wall. So that was part of what Jeff was trying to explain, our RGMP criteria was, you know, to help out in here. It's part of why we stubbed streets here, also stubbed street here to the Cunha property, which is actually, Jeff was alluding to this property, but this is actually the property that doesn't meet twenty thousand square feet next to Vince Cunha's property, who's a good friend of mine and used to, does a lot of civil engineering for me. And he currently lives here and he wrote the letter saying he has no problem with this because he's actually looking and that's why we put that stubbed street there, was to help him facilitate, you know, when this street comes in, he'd get another couple of parcels and a parcel back off the stubbed street here to his property. So we've designed this, this project up front to try and facilitate getting tilten shut down so that access is not out to Lone Tree, that people could come internal to our project, get these folks off. And then Frydell's here already access onto Smith Road, so that's really not an issue. So that explains a little bit about that and I'm here to address any other questions you might have for me.
Any questions? Okay, great.
I actually have a question. Currently, it looks like there is going to be, and I don't know if this is addressed to you or to the planning department, but in regards to, some of the lots are much smaller, like in the Pruitt Ranch future subdivision, and then it looks like on the other side, which I don't know exactly, subdivision eight-eight-seven-five. I'm sorry? Oh, okay, Meritage Homes. These lots are very large, which, I mean, that's nice to have that option. I'm just wondering, how does that really play into, and again, I understand that they need to be twenty thousand square feet or more to butt up against acre, you know, an acre property or mine, you know, so on. And these are existing residences now, but eventually they're going to be most likely developed into something larger. So I guess what, I'm just wondering why we have these huge lots kind of in an area, it doesn't feel like it all meshes well in regards to the type of homes. I assume larger homes will be going on to twenty thousand square feet properties.
Actually, the larger lots are large, single-story homes. So, you know, we have quite a few, I think of our fifty-nine homes, I believe thirty-three or thirty-four of them are single-story homes. And we pretty much put them on the larger lots. As far as the issue of the lot size in our project, that's the zoning. And previously, the fifteen acres up front, we did a general plan rezoning on, those were one-acre parcels. And we actually rezoned that property to R-1E to match the two properties to the south. So...
So now are you the developer or are you going to be selling this to a developer?
I'm the developer.
Oh, okay. Because I thought I said that.
So, yeah, so you go from Meritage, which is tens, you know, to Suncrest on the other side that has any, I think their smallest lots along here are eleven, they have some twenties along here, and then internal, I think they're around fifteens. So I think their smallest is eleven, their largest is twenty, and they have some fourteen-five, fifteen thousand square foot lots.
Actually mixed up a bit then.
Yeah.
No, that's the thing, I guess I was looking at, you know, all of a sudden you have these really large lots and then all these small, I mean, how are we mixing it into the...
Yeah, but when you, when you transverse over to Suncrest, yes, you're right, as Don's saying, there are some twenty thousand square foot lots in that subdivision that would be comparable to these. But he is, he's the developer, he's doing the lots, he's not building the homes. There are, there is no design of any homes been submitted yet.
Right.
So they're gonna be individuals who come in, you could go and purchase a lot and you'd have to get your, your design of the home going through the process a different way than what...
Oh, so they're gonna be like all custom? Is that what it is?
Semi, it could be semi-custom. Our RGMP, I think we had, you know, proposal for four floor plans with four different elevations, you know, to get the points for architecture.
Okay.
Just to kind of clarify, Jeff, and usually when we see a vesting tentative map, we'd see the architecture with it and that's why we don't have, this is a vesting tentative map tonight and it's conditioned to come back with the architecture.
No, no, there's a condition that says the vesting needs to be removed.
Right.
Right, that's why it's only tentative.
It's only a tentative map because there is no, you're right.
And that's why it's kind of confusing.
Now, there are no design guideline or designs of homes that you're gonna be viewing, so the word vesting needs to be taken off the map and we've got that covered.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry, that's been in my mindset, is researching all of it.
Okay, any other questions? Great, since this is a public hearing, would anyone in the audience like to come forward and speak on this item? Okay, can I have a motion to close the public hearing? Karen, are you coming up? No, okay.
Motion to close public hearing.
I'll second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, public hearing's closed, five-zero. Art, you want to start us off?
Sure. I, in reviewing the original conditions and then the amended conditions that came forward, I have no issues with it, I'm in favor of it. The only comment I will make is that I would amend condition fifty, that the height of the sound walls, as applicable, be reviewed by the community development director. And then also, we're gonna include the condition that Jeff brought up, the remainder parcel. But other than that, I have...
Great, thanks, Art. Russell, would you like to go next?
Well, pretty much what Art has talked about, I don't see really any issues, you know, it's just a vesting map, so, no.
And remember, they have two items tonight, the ned deck and the tentative map, so if you guys have any comments on that, that'd be great. Julie?
No, I guess my question has, my questions were answered. Sounds like a different way to develop some property, but, you know, it's nice to have options, so. And lot forty-one was the only one that didn't meet the requirements given, but that's been explained of why, you know, it's rated a little differently, so. Otherwise, I think that's it. Thanks.
Yeah, I don't have any other comments that anybody's made. It meets all the general plan guidelines except for lot twenty-one and we've got an adjacent property owner that's, that is willing to accept that, so I think it should be passed as presented.
Great. I didn't have any comments either. You know, the RGMP kind of fooled me there for a little bit, but I got it figured out. See, that lot forty-one with the adjacent owner, that's perfect. And I think bigger lots are better, you know, you get smaller lots, you get more traffic, you get tighter setbacks, so I'm all for the bigger lots. I think that's great. I think any homeowner would love a bigger lot than a smaller lot. So I'm in favor as well of both the ned deck and the tentative map.
I'll go ahead and make a resolution, or a...
Motion?
A motion. I'll make a motion and make a resolution, how's that? I'll make a motion to approve resolution number zero-six-five-three, mitigated negative declaration for tentative subdivision map number ninety-fifty with the following change. On the second page, strike out, the planning commission of the city of Brentwood, that's hereby take the following action, strike out that sentence and replace it with the sentence that was given to us by Jeff, that states recommends that the city council approve the mitigated declaration prepared for this project and direct staff to file the notice of determination with county clerk.
Great, have a motion. Damien, you want to say something?
Can I just clarify that motion, Commissioner Londo's, through the chair?
Sure.
Were you striking out the now there for sentence or the sentence after that?
The after the colon, where it says, "does hereby take the following action," colon, the sentence after that.
Okay, thank you.
You have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the ned deck passes, five-zero.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we approve resolution number zero-six-twenty-five relative to the tentative subdivision map number ninety-fifty, as amended by the change in the conditions of approval that was submitted to us by Jeff prior to the meeting, with the following one amendment, I'd like to amend condition fifty to include the comments that the, and this is relative to the sound walls, that the sound wall, the height of the sound walls be reviewed by the community development director. And then I'd like to add condition number sixty-three that states that, that the remainder parcel, that the developer work with engineering and the community development director relative to the remainder parcel for access off of Smith Road.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, Julie, seconds. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, it passes, five-zero. Congratulations. Okay, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing. It's a development agreement to govern the phasing, the development and construction of the project, a vesting tentative subdivision map for Bridal Gate to subdivide approximately one-hundred-and-thirty-four acres into one-hundred-and-sixty-six single-family residential lots and nine remainder parcels, and a design review for twelve models of single-family homes to be constructed on the one-hundred-and-sixty-six proposed lots. The project site is located west of State Route Four bypass on both sides of Sand Creek Road Extension. The applicant is Discovery Builders and this is Eric Nuthenius's project.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening to you and members of the commission. I think the commission, with probably the exception of Commissioner Gildersleeve, recalls this project. It's been around for quite some time now and it was originally considered by the commission last April. And the project overall includes five entitlements, the three tonight plus a general plan amendment and a rezone. The general plan amendment and rezone were denied twice by the planning commission and appealed twice to the city council. The most recent action taken on this project was just two weeks ago from tonight and that was a city council meeting where the council formally approved the appeal based on changes made to the project by the applicant. They approved the mitigated negative declaration, they approved the general plan amendment language and they approved the rezone, which establishes development standards for the entire site. All that stuff is included as attachments to the staff report for tonight's item. So tonight, you are gonna be considering the remaining three entitlements. Assuming approval of those three, the development agreement would then move on to the city council for formal approval and the project would be fully entitled. Just briefly, a description of the project. This is the State Route Four bypass that runs along the east side. The west side is the city limit with Antioch. The south side is adjacent to the Brentwood Hills subdivision and then the north side is Old Sand Creek Road and you can see Sand Creek kind of runs through the northwest portion of the project site. It's about one-hundred-and-thirty-four acres and the subdivision map would take those one-hundred-and-thirty-four acres and divide them into one-hundred-and-sixty-six single-family homes. You would have one-hundred-and-twenty-four of those clustered in the southeast portion of the site here. Those are known as the village homes, they're smaller lots with a minimum size of five thousand square feet. You would also have, the other forty-two lots would be known as the executive lots with a ten thousand square foot minimum size. And then nine remainder parcels, including three for open space purposes, the first one here in the southwest corner of the site, the other two here, one here and one below. Two park sites, a large park site here with Sand Creek running through it and then a pocket park in, in this area. It's a little hard, oh, thank you. It's right there, actually. It's right there, actually. And then a thirty-four acre site on the north side of Sand Creek Road for future non-residential development. And then a couple of landscape parcels. The applicant is also proposing twelve models of homes, as Chairman Sterling referenced. I wasn't going to spend really much time at all on those. I know the applicant has a brief presentation to make on the design of those. I can tell you that the design review portion of the project does meet all the guidelines that the commission's typically looked at in terms of single-story plans on corner lots, single-story plans that back or side onto arterial streets, et cetera. The development agreement has been reviewed extensively by both city staff and the applicant, and we believe it provides a clear and comprehensive framework for development and completion of the entire project. I do want to say that staff's opinion, and I believe that the opinion of the council as well, is that the modifications made to the project have addressed the concerns that were initially raised by both the commission, the public, and staff as well. And that includes, now, when you look at these one hundred and thirty-four acres, you have forty percent of that in either open space or park uses, and that meets the intent of the general plan. We will also see this hill form that runs in a northwest-southeast fashion here preserved, and I would say to the greatest extent possible, by moving these executive lots. If you recall, the original submittal had the homes pretty much right on top of the hill, and it included some fairly significant grating of that hill to create the pads for those homes. So by moving those lots over to the west side of the hill, the integrity of the hill will be preserved, and it'll create a, what I think would be a nice little community over here of these larger lots. We've also addressed potential noise impacts from the bypass by having a new technical study prepared that looks at the latest information relative to the bypass and Sand Creek Road interchange. And again, the aesthetic impacts of placing homes on top of the hill has been mitigated by moving those homes over to the west side. So in conclusion, the recommendation from staff at this time is to pass three resolutions. The first one would be recommending approval of the development agreement to the council. So assuming that takes place, they would consider that at the, I believe we'd take that to the June twenty-seventh council meeting. The second would be to pass a resolution approving the map as conditioned. And I am also one of those folks that included a small agenda review for you. But there's just two conditions, and I think they're fairly straightforward. And then the third would be to pass a resolution approving the design review for the homes and related improvements. So with that, I'll turn it back to Chairman Sterling.
Great, thanks, Eric. Okay, does anyone have any questions for Art? Great. Would the applicant like to make a presentation?
Chairperson Sterling, members of the commission, Albert Sino with Discovery Builders. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. I thank you for taking the time, and I appreciate Eric making the presentation, and that was pretty informative, so. Without taking a lot of your time, I know you have a lot of items on the agenda. I did want to just let you know that we have worked with staff, and staff cordially has worked with us, and I think we've come to culmination of a five-year event, and the project, as we see it now, has been redesigned extensively with saving the hill formation as Eric showed you in the, I guess would be in the southwestern or eastern, western portion of the project. We do have the parks, we have the open space. When we were here last with the commission, they had a few items that were of concern, one being the masonry wall. We did a sound study on that, and with with the combination of berms and sound walls, we're going to address all those sound study concerns or sound issues that could be of concern. We have the single stories on all of these streets fronting San Jose Avenue and also on the corner lots. I have Ralph Strauss here tonight to talk a little bit about some of the architecture for the design review part of it, and I'll kind of lead that for him. We've added many different plans within the project. I think we have one plan for every, if memory serves, every fourteen lots, so we're well within that that criteria that the city's looking for. If you have any real specific questions, I'd like to try to address those as best as possible. Other than that, I know most of you have seen it before, and I don't want to be too long-winded. I appreciate your time.
Any questions? Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Did you want your architect to make a presentation at all, or are you okay? If you can come on up.
Certainly, Ralph Strauss, SDG Architects. We prepared a very brief presentation tonight because the architecture has not really been an issue in any of the previous meetings which this item has been considered. Next slide, please. Twelve plans, six styles, three styles per plan, up to one hundred and sixty-five unique combinations of these homes. This project has got more plans than required. We've worked hard to articulate the homes around all four sides. We think that there are a lot of combinations and features that'll make these homes very pleasing for this site. Next slide, please. Although a little difficult to see, this is a landscape plan put in here to emphasize the variety of garage setbacks, garage configurations, variation in the front and rear setbacks, and articulation of the footprints. This is the village home street scene. Next slide, please. These are the executive homes, much wider homes, and show the same type of articulation with the courtyards, the articulation on the rears of the homes, the sides of the homes, the side setbacks, and all of those nice amenities. Next slide. These are the street scenes, sample street scenes for each of the, showing one elevation of each of the plans. Put this in here to show you the changes in the massing of the homes, of the roof pitches, of the materials, articulation from the side yard setbacks, the variety of garage configurations. Next slide, please. One sample plan showing how we're making major changes in the massing of the home with the change from gable roof to hip roof, changes in the extent of the porches, tower elements, and material changes on the homes. Next slide. Again, going around the sides and rear of the home, cantilevering elements off the sides, off the rears, especially in areas where those are seen over adjacent walls and things to further enhance the homes. Next slide, please. The larger homes, again, same change in the roof forms, massing, tower elements, and materials to differentiate the unique elevation styles. That's a very quick overview. I'm available for any questions that you might have.
Great, thank you, Ralph. Any questions?
I have a couple.
Okay, go ahead, Art.
Ralph, I was looking at the site plan, and I noticed that on San Jose Avenue, before it turns to go into Sand Creek, there's six houses on the southwest side, and they alternate. I wrote down that lots forty-three through forty-eight alternate plans seven and two, three times. And I noticed that because there was no, in my mind, there was too much consistency there. And then I also noticed that you have two eight-S plans in the executive homes, and both of those are adjacent to eights. So you've got basically the same plan right next door to each other twice. And then in this plan, it didn't show what lot fifty-two was, but when I looked over here, it's Plan Six, so I think by definition, we're okay with that. So I was just, I'm just No, my question is, is there any way to mix that up a little bit without creating too much trouble down the road?
The challenge in citing homes always comes down to shape of the lot and which homes may fit balanced with the desire to get single-story homes located in certain locations, you know, as required by the commission. We feel that we've adequately addressed any concerns that might bring up due to the fact that the eight and the eight-S, one has a side-load garage, and each of those have three different unique elevations. And with the different elevation styles, even when we have homes adjacent to each other, we've created so much difference in the massing of the homes that most people will not be able to tell that they are the same homes.
And same, what about for the six, small?
The same thing, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, there are, you know, there are three unique elevation styles per plan, and even in the area where sometimes when we're forced to put, you know, some similar homes adjacent to each other with the different elevation styles, it's not noticeable that they are the same plans. Adding that side-load garage item, and even more so.
Okay, and then one other question that I noticed, and this is just on Plan Three. The only one, in going through all your plans, they look really great, and I really like them. What struck me, though, was on the rear, the only exception I saw was the rear elevation C of Plan Three, the top windows identically mirror the bottom windows, and I was wondering if that was something that we could, unless the other commissioners disagree, that we could go ahead and maybe mix up a little bit. It's like a mirror image of the top and bottom.
Are these windows right here?
Yeah, and also to your left. The top and bottom wall are identical.
We, without looking back at the plan, I couldn't tell you exactly what is interior to those spaces, but many times we have long spaces may relate to each other, but otherwise, we do have some need to keep some wall space stacking between the first and second floor just to meet the structural needs of the homes these days. So we're always trying to get as many windows as possible on the exteriors of the homes, and the fence line, you can see, is dashed in across the bottom, right there, and so also the most visible window locations on any of these homes are at the second floor.
And then lastly, I probably should have asked Eric this. The nine affordable units, I couldn't find them. And I was wondering if
Yeah, those haven't been identified. Those will be identified prior to final map approval. That's in negotiation with staff.
Okay.
They'll probably go to the Housing Subcommittee for review and location.
Right.
And how the developer wants to approach it.
That's correct.
Okay. One other question. Ralph, I don't think this will be for you, but Millbrook Circle. You know, to me, a circle is something you go in and you go around, and I was looking at Millbrook Circle, I don't know who has the naming rights to the street, but to me, it doesn't seem to be a circle, and I was just, it's just a question. I don't know who names them. I don't know why it's called a circle, though.
I can answer that. Most of the times when tentative maps are submitted, and you're creating new streets, obviously, if the prior map was, you know, Luntry Way is already there, but the new streets that are created are typically labeled as letter streets because the street names aren't technically identified yet. Sometimes, however, they'll come in with names already identified. That does not, however, mean they're approved. Once the entitlements are granted and the applicant is going through the plan check process, one of the steps is to submit a list of street names for the entire project. Community development staff works with the police department staff to make sure those are appropriate, and we'll certainly do that in this case, especially given that San Jose Avenue is extending and you have a new road coming off there, so. There's a few instances, in fact, I've already talked to Lieutenant Strach about this, so we'll make sure we look real carefully at the street names to make sure they make sense.
Thanks. Yes.
Okay, great. Thanks, Art. Go ahead, Julie.
Plan Two-S. This is, the elevation is a little strange to me, I guess just because there's like a hip roof on one side, and then the other side, you know, it doesn't, I guess, it's more asymmetrical than symmetrical. And just that roof line, just to me, it looks a little strange. So I don't know if you had any thoughts, or you could explain, kind of, I'm sure there's a reason for that, but.
Plan Two-A?
Two-A, yeah. The hip roof on the right-hand side there relates to the hip that is occurring over the garage. And so in looking for creative ways to vary the roof forms of the different elevations, this is one alternative that we came up with. Anytime that you look at an elevation just standing by itself, it, it's not in its proper context. The best way to look at it is in the street scene, in the role of homes.
Is there any way?
It'll look fine in the neighborhood, certainly.
Just doesn't seem to fit with everything else, but but I will lean to your expertise. There's a question I have.
Okay, thanks, you guys. No more questions? Sir?
I'd just say thank you very much, and we've read all the conditions, and we agree with everything in the development agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Since this is a public hearing, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to make a comment?
My name is Karen Ragia. I live at twenty-three twenty-one Wendy Springs. I've been following this project for a very long time. I guess the first thing I want to say is that I believe after reading the staff report and talking to staff, most of my questions for this project have been answered. I was concerned about the trails, and when they would be completed for the open space, actually, it's the two view areas is where I was concerned. But I saw that that's been addressed in the conditions of approval. I was very pleased to see the extension, the extensive conditions of approval for this project. I really like the idea of the open space, and the trailhead vista points, which will enable this project to meet its forty percent parkland area. I was concerned at first of the dry grass, but I also see the conditions have addressed that also. I am still not happy about the thirty-five percent mixed use, as I said to the council the other night, I'm development, but I also agree that it's not feasible to move Sand Creek Road. So I'll have to live with a thirty-five acre mixed-use business park. But I do feel also, and I know that this is probably not the time to address the parking and stuff for the business park, since that won't be done right away, but just to have it as an idea when it does come eventually, is that I feel that it is feasible to have a condensed parking area in the business park area. I know we've talked about the water table being high for Brentwood, but I think in that area, it's probably, see, my house is thirty-five feet, so I think it's a little bit lower there. My recommendation is for a two-story parking structure or an underground parking garage instead of a sprawl parking area somewhere to the northwest of the business park area with large trees to camouflage it. This would leave more square footage space for business park buildings, construction, and green space, which may draw some larger companies to this area, bringing higher-paying jobs, companies who can take advantage and draw from our existing highly educated and executive workforce. That would keep some of our increasing population from having to commute to San Jose, Pleasanton, and San Francisco, enabling them to spend more quality time with their families. I think that eventually, when this does get developed, and hopefully, it'll be more than ten years, I've read the development agreement, and I like the option of freezing the fees for three years. I think that Sand Creek corridor is a major view corridor for Mount Diablo, and in this project, I would like to see nice trees, lined shady walkway areas and tree-lined parkways, similar to what Fairview towards Balfour used to be like before we tore out the trees. And in planning this area, we really wanted the appeal of a park-like setting business park area for this corridor. I hope we can keep that dream alive for this area, and I'm sure the open market center that's planned for across the bypass will enhance this project. Hopefully, they both will. I know the city's doing an excellent job trying to plan the whole thing. Just to add to the developer, that when this project does get developed, I'd like to see more restaurants, possibly maybe a conference center or things like that, that would draw for that business park area. It's very nice to see this project coming along, and the many improvements that have been made with this in the last two years. I love the circulation for this project, and I know it'll be extremely beneficial for the city and its residents. And I just want to thank the developer and the city and council. And I just want to thank the developer and the city and council for being accountable for the infrastructure improvements, and I know, I know that our city is very responsible for its growth by putting infrastructure in place before development, and I know this developer has to put a lot of infrastructure in place. And I would just like to thank him and to thank the city and the planning commission for keeping that, that improvement in, that's something that we really, really stress in the general plan, and I know it's been a hard thing in the last two years to work with, but I just think that that's very important, and I guess I would just like to congratulate everybody for, for keeping that, that in place before the development and continue to striving to balance our jobs-to-housing ratio. Thank you.
Thanks, Karen.
Hi, Joan Douglas again, resident, resident of Brentwood. Again, and I, I was at the city council meeting a couple of weeks ago, and I also just wanted to also let you, all of you know that, and the developer know, that we'd just like to commend the applicant, the Discovery Builders, for an outstanding revised project plan for Bridelgate. It's, it's, it's a wonderful plan, and I think we all did a great job in working together and a collaborative effort, and something that we can really be proud of. And again, I just want to say thank you to Discovery Builders for stepping up and for just working with us on that. I do have one question for staff. I just want to, at that city council meeting, we did ask for some language to be inserted into the development agreement, and I just wanted to make sure that, in, in the commercial area, and again, I know that we're not coming forward with that yet, but we did ask that in the commercial area that to, and put, ensure that development standards established do not limit or restrict future restoration or enhancement efforts of Sand Creek in accordance with the city's general plan, municipal code, the master plan for Trails, Parks, and Recreation, and Brentwood Creek Trails and ReVegetation Master Plan. So, I just wanted to ask staff if that has been incorporated into the development agreement. Thank you.
Thanks, Joan. Eric, would you like to, I guess that's me, right?
It's actually not the development agreement, it's the, the rezone, the development standards that were put in place by the council. That has been done, the exact wording was put into place for both subarea A and B, so that would be area north of Sand Creek and the area south of Sand Creek here. That, the second reading of the ordinance is going to be considered a week from tonight by the city council, so I imagine by the end of the week, you could pull that report up on the website and view it, just to confirm, but it is there.
And to piggyback on that with Karen's comments, the commercial isn't really before us as how it's laid out tonight, you know, it's just showing the area, it's showing what could be there, what could not be there, but we're not approving, you know, any parking lot layout, any buildings, any parking, underground parking or anything like that tonight. Okay, any other applicants, I mean, any other one that would like to speak on this item? Okay, great. Have a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make the motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? Pass this five zero. Julie, do you want to start us off? And there's the three items, I know Eric already mentioned it, but just to mention again, the development agreement, divesting tentative subdivision map, and the design review.
Okay, a couple of things that I had. It looks like a wonderful development. I love all the detail and everything, and all the plans are very easy to read. I know this is my first time looking at it, so, as a commissioner. Some of the things that I just wanted to confirm, and maybe they just didn't show up on the plans, on L2, in regards to fencing and wall plan, I just wanted to make sure that lots number 43 through 48 had a fence between them. I'm sure they do, a wood fence, I just didn't see on the plan.
Did you want me to answer that now for you?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Uh, this is 43 through 48 here, thank you very much. So, the red is the, is the sound wall along San Jose, and then this would be the good neighbor fence, I think, are you talking about the side property lines?
Yeah.
For common?
Sorry, yes.
Yeah, you're right, that's, that's not shown on there, but that is, that is a standard, so you can see all the lots down here have them as well, so that, yeah, that would typically be put in.
Another thing that I wanted to comment on was the my, or the wire, six-foot wire mesh fence, which runs along the back of the executive homes to the open space, as well as over off of Cherry Wood and Wood Glen Court. I would think, especially for the executive homes, I would think of using like a wrought iron or something would look much better than a wire mesh. It's my personal opinion, and I didn't know if anyone else had thoughts on that, but I know Shadow Lakes has wrought iron around the golf course, which definitely adds to the appearance of, you know, the, just the space in general, so. Okay.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any real firm thoughts on that. I mean, we do typically see the tubular steel, and I don't know if, if Heidi could help on this. I believe the, the Vineyards project includes a similar type of fence adjacent to the open space, is that, is that correct, or is that tubular steel as well?
Um, there was a, a wire fence in the use, utilized in the Vineyards project to protect some state parkland and wildland area from kind of intrusion by domestic animals.
And just to add to that, just from my past experience, what we've done before along golf courses is we put that wrought iron fence because people are golfing and they're looking at the backs of the homes, so you wanted them to look nice. But in cases like this, where you have the wrought iron, you want to kind of diminish the fence and have the view of the hill and have the animals, so I think that just may be a little bit more information that might help.
It's probably just a personal opinion on my part, but Plan One was the only one that I think had the issue with the roof height being above 30. Oh, wait, let me see. I have it written someplace. Anyway, maybe that's something, it had a high roof pitch, I think it was like 32 feet or something like that, but I can't remember. And again, I know that that's something that we're going to discuss tonight, we have a few issues with some other developments. I guess my concern is, you know, when we get past that required height, when do we say, okay, well, we can go ahead and accept it or, you know, stick with our requirements or rules?
Eric, let me, well, I'm going to add to that real quick. I believe the city council approved the rezone, which included that height. I mean, I don't think there's much that we could do as a planning commission to reduce it to 30 feet after the city council's already said. I think that they're going to allow one house to be 32 feet high. Is that correct?
Yeah, the applicant made the case at the May 23 council meeting to have an exception to the 30-foot height limit for this one particular model, which is one of the executive homes, and it would be plotted 10 times on those 42 lots, and it is specified at 33 and a half feet.
Yeah, 33 and a half.
That's page six of the, what we had to close here, where that is mandated by the city.
So, they did make a specific exception to take into account this particular, this particular model.
Okay, thank you. I think the project's great. I love the idea of the executive estates actually sitting, kind of nestled in behind the hillside. It does give them a little bit of seclusion, I guess, and you don't have as much issue in regards to Highway Four bypass and the noise. I love the idea of the parks and everything running through, or the, all the trails. I was wondering if there's, I know those hills currently are pretty much bare or have, you know, just grass, dry grass, it typically dies and then looks kind of ugly. I was wondering if there's any way we could incorporate adding some trees or something, you know, on that hillside, just to add a little bit more, you know, soften the hill up a bit, add some interest in regards to, you know, walking on the paths and so on. And that's, that's pretty much all I had. Otherwise, I think it looks like a great project and has a lot of wonderful amenities, so, thank you.
Great. Thanks, Julie. Russell, would you like to go next?
Thank you. I don't know how long ago, I guess it's been within the past year, that we saw the first application. And when it came before us, the planning commission couldn't reconcile some, some huge issues, that being the 50 acres required for the regional commercial. That's now been resolved by city council. The first review, we had problems with the single stories on corners, vacuumed major arteries, and I can't even remember the other issues, and the developer was agreeable to changing those, and they came back the second time, and they made some of the changes, but we still couldn't get past the 50 acres and some of the other things that we just, we just couldn't get past, and we denied it again. I really appreciate the Discovery Builders working with us, because we both have the same motives, and that's to get something that satisfies both you and the city. And I think that's been done, I think maybe some, some tensions have been raised a little bit and some, some motives questioned, but I think we came out with a real good project, and I think that staff has worked real hard, and I know Discovery Builders has, has gone out of their way to satisfy the needs of Brentwood, and I really appreciate what they've done. I've looked at, they've met every condition that we raised in the first two meetings. What we couldn't reconcile was the mandate of the 50 acres. That's been satisfied by the, by city council. Just overall, they've worked with us, and they've addressed every single issue that I remember being, I hear being either raised or I raised myself, and I'm ready to make a motion to approve it.
Great, thanks, Russell. Art, would you like to go next?
I concur with Russ. I'm, it's been a long road a whole, but we've, Discovery Builders has come through, and granted, a couple of things have already been approved by city council, but the nuts and bolts of it were that we needed some changes made. And I also appreciate what Discovery Builders has done. I have no, everything, every question I had today has been addressed, I have no exceptions. I like the, the plans, the architectural plans, I think are going to look really nice when they're done. The, the trail on Sand Creek, which I, I think is going to be a, a major plus for the city, not just in Bridelgate, but going under the freeway over to the other side, and that is, is going to be a major thing for the city, and, and I have no exceptions. I congratulate Discovery Builders, I congratulate staff. I'm with Russ, it took a year, but, for us, it took a year, and I'm also in favor of it.
Great, thanks, Art. Jim?
I would basically support all the comments that have been made to this point. It's always, it's always amazing when you go through a design process and actually, you know, all the various facets, how long it actually takes to finally come up to what you originally asked for. But, you know, whatever the timeframe may be, I think we've actually gotten it. I think it's going to be a, a really good visual impact coming into the city, based upon the fact that we've been able to maintain that hillside, and I don't think it's going to take away whatsoever from the executive homes on the opposite side, clearly coming out the back, and I think they've got an unlimited view of Mount Diablo, which is absolutely spectacular. I did have some questions. I, I completely enjoyed all of the architectural renderings and all of the stone use and the variety and the roofs, and I mean, I think you've done just a spectacular job in addressing all the issues that we, that we originally put before you. Concerns that I've, that I've got, and this would probably be through the chair to, to staff, has to do specifically with Sand Creek and any improvements there or not done, and whether or not, is this the appropriate time in which that is brought in? I know you mentioned that that's not really part of the development agreement, but we've had, not only on this, but we've had inquiries on behalf of Marsh Creek improvements. I was asking a question earlier, do we have any type of standards that are established for a creek as to, you know, width and staging and, you know, actually putting improvements in place?
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll take a crack at this, although I know we do have Parks and Recreation staff that may want to supplement this. Certainly, the design of the, of the large park site where the creek runs right through it will be critical in terms of, you know, how we, how we treat the creek, and also, in this area here, I mean, this particular project is being conditioned, and if you read through the development agreement, to construct the trail along Sand Creek, and that's great, but we're not going to know exactly how this area is going to be treated until the business park and, and regional commercial area develops. And of course, the, the plan for this park site would ultimately be approved by the Parks and Recreation Commission. So, I'm not sure, other than the conditions of approval, what's stated in the development agreement, and then the added language in the development standards that Ms. Douglas brought up, I'm not sure what more we can do at this point, but if, if Parks and Recreation staff has any more specific comments, I'd invite them to share those now.
Other than the fact that, I don't have a microphone here, that we would look at typically creek landscaping adjacent, especially to a park, typically would be riparian in nature, but we would review that as we're reviewing the landscape plans.
So, is it, so is the final decision that that would come through Park and Recreation? Is that correct? In other words, the review of that and ultimately what would be decided?
True, uh, true, but keep in mind, too, that, again, this park site, and since the creek runs through it, that would be reviewed by the Parks and Recreation Commission, and then as these areas develop here, the planning commission itself, and then again, the Parks and Recreation Commission, will have a chance to look at detailed plans for enhancement or restoration of the creek.
In, in looking at the trail system, which I really applaud going through the site, I had a question relative to trash, trash containers, parking, if people decide that they would actually like to go to the top of the hill, where are we anticipating people to park?
Are you talking about the parking, the actual park?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, not only on the park, but also on the trail system?
Okay.
So, if we've got a trail system which points out that there's actually benches at the top of the hill, the first thing that's going to be decided is how do I get to the top of the hill, and where do I park my car in order to walk up there?
So, you're talking about the two noes?
Yeah. Exactly.
Typically, we would have garbage cans probably at the bays out at the top next to where a bench would be.
Okay.
I'm not quite sure as far as the parking goes, we have to look at the subdivision plan, see if, you know, typically would be on-street parking in the regional area. Okay.
And I might add that Craig, the director of Parks and Rec, we discussed perhaps, perhaps having kind of a little bank of parking specifically for this. There was some concern about people maybe using that to hang out and kind of park their long term, so we've opted for on-street parking.
Okay. And I would, I would actually like to agree with Julie on the trees or something up around there. I know it's a spectacular view at the top of the hill, I've been up there on several occasions. It would be nice if there was something that was taken into consideration, much as, as it will be within the park. Those are the comments I've got. It's, it's, it'll, it'll be great. When are you guys going to start?
Great, thanks, Jim. Hallelujah. I, I pretty much concur with everyone else. It's great to see this much-needed road from Sand Creek go all the way through and getting rid of the circulation through the Rayleigh Shopping Center. It's all great things for Brentwood. But I always think you can make a project better, and I do have one comment. So, I mean, one of the biggest concerns that, when you're going to look at this development is, is kind of looking at the backs of the houses. I mean, that's what you're going to see, and like, you know, when you drive down, what's it, 680 over there by Danville, and you look at all those homes, you're looking at the back, and the only thing they've changed is a few shutters or something like that? Well, I mean, the architect did a great job, there's something on every single back of the plan. It looks great, and it's going to be different, except on Plan Seven, there's a pop-out shown in elevation, but it's not shown on the actual floor plan, so I just want to make sure that it does get built and it is, and maybe it is added as a condition. I don't know if you want to, I don't know if you really need to show it, Eric, but there is a, in Plan, it's just flat on the first floor and second floor, but when you look at the rear elevation, there is a pop-out shown. rear elevation, there is a pop-out shown. So yeah, there's the pop-out in the bottom right-hand corner, but it doesn't show that in the floor plan. It didn't call it out as optional, so that's why I just said, hey, you know, let's put that in there. So I would, I would want to see that condition added.
How would you word that?
Just in the designer view conditions, just add a condition to say Plan, ensure that Plan 7 has a pop-out to the rear of the house as shown on the rear elevation, something to that effect. And then, I think it's a great job, the plans, you exceed the plan requirements by six plans. It's amazing, that's great. And then to answer one of Art's questions about the single stories, because in the smaller development, there's only two single-story plans, and there's a requirement on that back that 50% of the homes have to be the 50, I mean, the single story. So you're going to see some flip-flop and flip-flop, but as Ralph said, that there's articulation in different elevations on the back that you're going to comply, and it's much better than seeing a two-story back there and a bunch of them. So I think it's great, it looks good. And Millbrook Circle, I think the reason why they call it Millbrook Circle is because there's an EVA there, and if you could drive around in circles right through there if you wanted to. So, other than that, let's see here, those were all my, all my comments.
Ready for a motion?
Sure.
No, go ahead, but I have one point of clarification. Julie and Jim brought up about the trees by the benches, and I'd like to, I'd like to find that condition. I'm having trouble finding it.
You mean the trees on the hill?
Yeah, where the, where the park benches are.
Is it, there's no existing trees out there at all whatsoever?
I believe so, no, they're basically along the creek corridor.
Okay.
There is a condition though, it's Condition 22 for the tentative subdivision map, and that requires the developer to design, construct, and make open to the public parcels D and E, and those are the two parcels that encompass the peaks, to the satisfaction of the Parks and Recreation Director. I mean, if you desire, you could add some specific language for additional landscaping or something if you'd like, in that condition.
Okay. Discussions?
Just your, you're talking about a pop-out, so when we get to that, we probably need to clarify.
It's just a designer view, Plan 7, rear elevation. Do we need to address the backs of the fences, the wire fences versus the?
I thought I was giving up as an issue.
Okay, just thought I'd bring it up. Okay, great.
I make a motion that we pass Resolution 6-47, recommend the city council approve the development agreement number 0402.
Second?
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, passes 5-0.
I make a motion that we pass Resolution 0648, approving the vesting tentative subdivision map number 8506, as condition with the addition of conditions number 102, corrections 101 and 102, as written on a memorandum dated 6 June 2006 by Heidi Klein, planning manager.
And that's Resolution 06-48, is that correct?
Yes.
Great. Okay, I have a motion.
Can we throw in an amendment to Condition 22 relative to?
I thought that was on the next, is that, is that in that one? I thought it was on the design review.
No, design reviews for houses, this would be for the trees.
You're right. Plus, the correction in Condition number 22, that trees be planted to the satisfaction of the Park and Recreation Director along the hiking trail to the top of two noles within this division, subdivision? Is that satisfactory?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
That's my motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Passes 5-0.
I make the motion that we pass Resolution number 06-49, approving the design review number 01-12, as condition with the additional condition that Plan Number 7, which in design has a pop-out, in fact be included in all final plans and building. Is that sufficient?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Passes 5-0, congratulations.
Thank you for working with us so much.
Yep. And we're going to take a 10-minute recess real quick to get caught up on some more agenda, more items that have been added to the agenda. So we'll get started here at 9:45. Okay, we're going to get started here on item number seven. This is a public hearing. It's a rezone request to establish development standards for an approximately 11-acre site, a vesting tentative subdivision map to subdivide the site into 37 single-family residential lots to be known as Parkside Villas, and a 1.61-acre open space neighborhood park detention basin and design review for three models of single-family houses with four elevations for each, one model for a single-family duet with one elevation, and preliminary landscaping plans located north of Sand Creek, south of Abercote Way, and west of Fairview Avenue. A negative declaration for this project has been prepared pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act to assess potential environmental impacts. The applicant is Baca Properties, and this is Jeff Zoom's project.
Yes, thank you, and it's chairman and commission members. There are three, as you stated, there are three entitlements for this project, the first one being the rezone. It is part of PD 35, which is a very large PD that's been broken up into many subareas to date, and we're adding to that. It starts up here along Lone Tree, kind of follows down along Fairview, cuts back in around, and then it's, yeah, Fairview, and then comes back down to Sand Creek, and then back up. It's, they say it's been divided up into many subareas, of which this little piece right down here, right above Paul's head there, is Subarea I, which is where this project is going to go. Yeah, the development standards are being, that are being proposed are pretty consistent with the ones around it. There's some minor modifications to it, which I've addressed in the staff report, based upon the size of the, minimum size of the lots, is what they're asking. But basically, it does fit with what is, what has been proposed out here already for other developments that have been built and are under construction. The second entitlement is the vesting tentative map. This is being subdivided, this acreage is being subdivided into 35 single-family homes, and then a duet for affordable, to meet their affordability requirement for a total of 37 lots out there. The duet setup is a corner lot right here, which allows for access off of both streets. It gives the amassing of a, of a single-story home, but it does have the two separate units there, and that does meet their affordability requirement. They're, they're having access up through the existing subdivision to the north of them, and then out to the existing subdivision to the west of them. And then there's an area down here that's being created for a park area, and it's pretty much just a basic little loop system with the homes all around it. This property over here to the east is a vacant piece of land that is also under, under PD 35. It is an area that there are no development standards for yet, because no one has come forward with a project there. But it is, or can be developed with lots that are similar to the lots that are around it. It does have development that has occurred to the north of it and down park side of it over here, that all have roughly the same type of square-footage lots, somewhere between 7 and about 9,000 square feet that border it. Part of this tentative map is, again, the density transition issue. For all these lots that run right along here, none of them are at the 20,000-square-foot lot size that is, that the general plan and the density transition would like to see. However, there, like I was stating earlier, there are two ways that you can, to recommend approval of this transition, and one of the ways is if the, obviously if the property owner is in agreement with it, or two, if we don't hear from them, or they're not in agreement, you can still approve it or recommend approval of it, because this property here can be subdivided into the same-sized lots that the rest of these are around it. So that's your two, the criteria that allow you to approve this density transition, or change, or modification to the density transition policy, and take, allow this map to go forward to the council for their review and approval. The third entitlement to this project is the design review. They are providing three single-family residential models. They are providing three single-family residential models for the 35 different plans they have out here, for 35 different lots, and then a special duet, or a duet plan just for that corner lot. They're ranging in size from a little over 2,700 square feet to a little over, almost 3,700 square feet. They're using, you know, the basic type of, four elevations for each plan, and we're using the French cottage, Spanish, or craftsman style developer, architecture. They are consistent with all of your guidelines that apply to this, with the exception, or the only thing that they're out of, they do have a Plan Three cottage elevation. There's a dormer roof that does exceed the maximum height of 30 feet, and that we have conditioned this to revise that plan and resubmit it to bring it down to that 30-foot level.
Are you done with your report?
Uh, no, 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 no. Almost.
I don't, I don't mean to rush you, but I was gonna, let's just wait for questions till the end.
30. 30 feet is the maximum height out there, or that's what's in the code, or I mean, in their proposed standards. Again, once again, I have given you an agenda review packet there. Once again, I've taken the entire conditions of approval and placed them here to, so you know exactly where the changes occurred. There were three conditions, Condition 11, and then 27 and 28 that were added to the, to the, to the entire list of conditions of approval. In that packet, you also have a letter from the Delta Protection Commission, which we got today, which their concern, or their recommendations for this project are covered in the, the NAGDAF mitigation measures. You also received a letter from the National Heritage Institute. You received two letters from friends of Marsh Creek, and then a letter from Joan Douglas, all pretty much covering or requesting the same type of information to the creek that runs at the south side of this project. And then you also have a letter from the Director of Parking Rec, Craig Bronson, who addresses, his letter specifically addresses the National Heritage Institute's letter. However, the same comments or concerns were discussed in the other letters as well, so it relates to all those letters. I believe that is all that I have. I know the applicant is here, and I'm sure you have questions of myself or the applicant. And with that, I will turn it back over to the Chairman.
Great, thanks, Jeff. Any questions for Jeff? Go ahead, Jeff.
On, this was in conversation, they were talking about, since the wall design was not part of the original design review application, the applicant will have to bring the design back. Staff will then make a condition of both the subdivision and design review. Is that, is that typical, or is it?
That's the, that is the wall design that is being proposed around the park right here. There's, uh, there's no sound walls required anywhere along this development, other than the one that we have a condition, or we have a guideline that we like to put masonry walls behind. So that's, that's the wall that that's addressing, that that wall will come back to the, to, remember you, you know, if you want to come back to the whole commission, that's fine. But typically, we take those back to the design review group.
Okay, that was a question I had.
I had a question for you, Jeff. On, on Lot 8. That's where we just kind of turned the house and kind of made the side yard, I mean, the rear yard back, rear yard setback now, the side yard setback, and put the rear yard, just because it's a, it's on a knuckle, it's in a different shaped lot, it's a little more difficult. I don't know if you could zoom in onto that? Great. Has the owner on the other side of the property seen these drawings? Are they okay with the, I mean, I know they were complaining, I mean, not complaining, but they were against, you know, they wanted to see greater, larger setbacks, you know, greater than 20 feet, but here yet we're showing one house that's, you know, that's turned sideways with an eight-and-a-half foot setback. Is this something typical we've done before in the city of Broadway, or?
I can't specifically say that this is, I mean, I know we've, we've used some development, you know, like this, this is considered the side yard, even though the lot, you know, that's, that's what they're proposing. It doesn't mean that it has to be that way. It's a very difficult lot to put a house on.
Right.
And that's what they're proposing. I, like I said, I can't remember offhand of where this may have occurred elsewhere in the city. I can't think of a lot that has happened like that. Yes, the, the, I don't know if they have, the owner of this property has seen the plan specifically, but they've been noticed that this plan is in place, and it's for you tonight. And applicant also sent them a certified letter letting them know what their intentions were for this project. And that's when we got the letter back from her, saying that she was not, not willing to go forward with the smaller lots there. My knowledge is that land is all vacant out there, and that there isn't a resident out there.
Okay, so.
It's farmland, yeah.
It was just a letter?
Yeah, it's a letter from the property. I don't know if she's here, or not tonight, you can, you know, if she is, I, you know, she can come up and address her comments.
Okay. I mean, I'm just wondering, I mean, even if you change that property line between seven and eight, and adjust that property line, maybe make the setback smaller, I don't know if that's gonna solve it either.
Yeah, I don't know, you're talking about maybe drawing this line, kind of something like this, or something.
Or even maybe moving that line to the left a little bit, but I don't know if that's gonna help.
Yeah, it's, it's a very unique lot. You know, it, it typically doesn't, isn't the way that the, the lot, we look at lots like front and back by looking at the, the, you know, regular, where the small side would be the front, and the long side would be the side yards. It could be considered that this is the front of the house up here.
Sure.
Even though they have access like this, and this is a side yard, this is a side yard, and this would be the rear yard.
But staff, so staff's okay with the way it is right now?
It's, I think it's okay.
Okay.
But again, it's a, it's a, you know, if you have issues with it, you know, we can condition him to change the house on there, or develop a plan that specifically fits on there, so that it, it, it gives him a little more distance back here. Maybe it is a plan, or maybe it is a lot where they have to come up with a unique home to fit on there, and not use the ones that are, that are out there. Which is, you know, it's happened before. I mean, builders have designed homes to fit a specific lot, to give more setback.
Okay, thanks. No question. Any other questions? Okay, would the applicant like to make a presentation?
Thank you very much. Good evening. I'll keep my comments brief. I know it's getting late. My name is Dave Jacobson. I'm the Project Management Consultant for Baca Properties, and we're very pleased to be here tonight to take your comments and questions on the project. I do have a few points that I wanted to raise. Also wanted to mention Ralph Strauss is, of course, available. He was the architect on the conceptuals for any questions you might have. The architecture, there's a couple of things that are kind of unique about it, wanted to bring your attention to. One is the extent to which we tried to provide additional storage spaces inside the houses. And we think that'll help to keep the community looking a little more attractive. It'll allow homeowners to park more cars in their garages. So you'll see, like, walk-in linen closets and additional storage spaces off the garages. And it was a concerted effort to really try to do that. Another kind of distinguishing feature with the architecture was the ability to provide optional in-law units in the houses at the ground level, which is great for elderly people. It gives them a sense of independence. They have their own way to get in and out of the house, for example, their own door. And yet, they're still part of the house. And I should point out, there's no kitchen there, so it's not truly a separate dwelling in it. But it is a very nice functional space for an extended family member. I wanted to mention, the staff has done a great job on this project. I really appreciate the hard work that they've put into it. And it's been a pleasure to work with them. I just received the conditions of approval for the project four days ago, and I've had an opportunity to kind of go through them. And I wanted to bring to your attention a few conditions that require some, perhaps some clarification. You'll note that Condition Number Eight talks about an off-tract improvement. That was offered as part of our RGMP approval. And you'll also note that that condition states that those, that improvement is reimbursable. Conditions Number Nine and Ten speak to other off-tract improvements. And those are also reimbursable pursuant to our RGMP application. Those weren't stated in the conditions of approval, but I don't think that's needed. I think that's understood based on our RGMP approval. That's, that's a matter of record, so I just wanted to bring that up tonight. The other thing is Condition Number 16, which speaks to the project providing a 1.6 acre park slash open space. When I saw that condition, I met with the park staff to try to get clarification, because, you know, I just want to be upfront and make sure that we're all on the same page with what the project is expected to do. And it's Parks Department's opinion that 1.6 acres means 1.6 acres of flat usable land. And in fact, the project is not proposing that. Parcel A in its entirety is 1.6 acres, and that includes Sand Creek. I went back to the resolution that approved the project for RGMP, and I didn't see anything in the resolution that requires the project to provide 1.6 acres of usable parkland, nor did I in the staff report. So I would ask for your clarification on that, and there could be one of two ways to help me with the clarifying of that. One is to say, which is what the RGMP says, instead of 1.6 acres, the developer will provide two pocket parks in Parcel A. So just change that language.
What, what condition number was that again?
16.
Okay.
So we could do that, we could make that change. Or we could say the 1.62 acre requirement that's specified also includes the area encompassed by Sand Creek. Either of those changes would help us and the Parks Department become in alignment with what the project's expectations are. Once again, I want to be very clear. The RGMP resolution did not specify a park size, and our map did not offer, the map that we presented at RGMP, did not offer 1.6 acres of usable parkland. Entire Parcel A with Sand Creek was 1.6 acres. And in fact, the map that you have in front of you tonight is very, very similar to the map that was approved at RGMP. So there really has been almost no changes to Parcel A. That's all I wanted to say. I'll be happy to answer any questions. I would like to also ask if there are comments that come up during this review from the public that I have an opportunity to address those. I'd appreciate that.
Just a quick question and clarification on 16. Jeff, on these new conditions, I didn't see anything in there that said to be usable. So, I mean, so you're saying that basically?
I had a meeting with the Parks Department, and that's what their expectation is.
Okay. I mean, it's not, it's not written out
No, it's not.
in the condition, and so, I mean, this is what we're reviewing.
Right.
Just tonight, and you know it doesn't say usable in that.
I just want to be upfront. I don't want us to have any misunderstandings after this.
I do have a letter that Mr. Jacobson also received from Craig Bronson, the Director of Parking Rec, and he's stating that, that he cannot support the revision to Condition Approval Number 16. In a letter that came from Jacobson Company to Eric, who was handling the RGMP at the time, Baca Properties is, it stated, quote, "Baca Properties is proposing to set aside approximately 1.62 acres as a public mini-park, trail, and staging area for the future community park." He also states in the letter, "The Sand Creek itself will be buffered from the mini-park landscape portioned by a 10-to-20-foot-wide buffer zone featuring transitional riparian planting trees and an intermittent split rail fence. This will provide a visual and a physical barrier to keep people out of the environmentally sensitive Sand Creek." And it goes on to state, from Craig stating that there is no way he can read your intent as to anything other than a 1.62 acre mini-park and a buffered Sand Creek. The city's standard for park and open space does not allow for these areas to flood or fill with water. Therefore, your statement requires 1.6, 1.62 acres out of the creek. And that furthermore, there's no mention in our RGMP as to how this project is going to meet the C3 requirements. Parcel A can grow to accommodate those requirements, but can't be reduced in overall acreage to meet those requirements. So as the Director, I've been able to defend our conditions of approval and actions as a result of these approvals. I strongly believe that your request to revise Condition 16 reduces the expectation from the community as indicated by the developer.
And what I wanted to say was that this is a misunderstanding and a misstatement on my part, and I apologize. I was never intending to mislead anyone with respect to Parcel A. There is a map that accompanies the application that shows Sand Creek in Parcel A, and the area shown on that map is 1.6 acres. So there's been a misunderstanding, and, you know, going forward, I'll, I'll try to be more clear with staff on that. I wanted to also bring to your attention also, I mean, this is sort of a side point, but on the previous map, there was a creek that ran through the park, and that park area was encompassing that creek area too. So I'm not the only one with this misunderstanding. I mean, the other developer had that also.
I'd just say clarify a little bit further, Jeff. So Craig's basically saying that he's, he's not in support of this new written condition, or he is in support of this new written condition?
Not in support of what Mr. Jacobson would like to propose. He wants the condition to remain as is in there, and not have the changes made that Mr. Jacobson is requesting.
Okay. But, you know, as I stated, I mean, in there, it doesn't say usable. So, I mean, it's sort of agreeing with what you're saying.
Except that Parks interprets it as usable.
Okay, but it's not written in there. Okay. Go ahead.
Jeff, on the, this is on Page Three, in which it's specifying Parcel A is 1.58 acres.
Three of, oh, I'm sorry, what?
This is of the staff report. I'm trying to understand that if we've got 1.62, is that correct? That what's the, what's the takeaway? What do we actually end up with if we're talking?
In terms of usable park space?
Yeah, right, what they're saying.
If you look at the map that was submitted, it's roughly, there's two little pocket parks that combined are roughly about half an acre, 0.6 acres in that neighborhood.
Jeff, did you see what I meant?
Yeah, I, in the staff report you talked about.
Yeah, it says vesting tentative subdivision map, it says one parcel will be created. In addition, Parcel A is 1.58 acres for an open space neighborhood park detention area.
I must have gotten that off of some document or some map that he provided with us, or to us.
Yeah, I wanted to clarify, I'm looking, I'm getting a little bit confused here myself, because as it stands, if we don't do anything, the 1.62 acres will go right, there will be a buffer between Sand Creek and the park, right?
No, the 1.6, he want, Craig, the direction from the parking rec is they want a clear 1.62 acres of property that is flat, not being used as a detention basin, as being proposed by this project. It has to be out of the water flood area, it has to be land that is available for park use, not a detention basin that's gonna fill up for part of the year and then be dry for the other part of the year. It has to be completely, the park guidelines are that they, and please jump in.
One of the, there's a couple of issues associated with this. The, the park that's proposed, the park area that's Parcel A, is also to be considered a C3 stormwater protection. a C3 stormwater protection area. So, you know, that we've been talking about usable, but you, you can't use a facility that's going to, to be basically wet all year round because it's either, it's also going to gather, you know, water from irrigation system, from the property and whatever. The other issue that's somewhat confusing, from what I remember, Dave, is the 1.62 acres included the Conocoaster County flood control easement, did it?
That's right.
So, you know, we wouldn't even have fee title to some of that property.
Well, as it stands right now, we're recording a final map that'll do away with that, that offer of dedication. Can I ask, can I clarify something that you said, though? We've, we've been working with the Parks Department over the past couple of weeks on this parcel A and how it should look and work and so forth. The original thinking was, yes, we're going to try to use those grassy areas for C3 provisions. Parks Department has made it very clear that they don't like that idea. And so what we've done is we've gone back and we've modified parcel A so that it has a separate detention area just dedicated for C3 requirements. And in addition, we've maintained the areas that were shown for RGMP approval for the two little pocket parks. So we really have been working with the park staff to try to address concerns such as that. Where we're kind of getting hung up, I think, is Craig is, and, you know, deservedly so, he's trying to protect what is represented to, to the city during RGMP. But the point is, is that there was a miscommunication. What was presented was a parcel A of 1.6 acres, which was labeled park, okay? And that's my mistake, I apologize for that. But that, the map clearly showed in that area, Sand Creek. So in terms of net usable, flat park area, what was, what was approved at RGMP is something substantially less than 1.6 acres.
There is a little confusion just on our part, and you'll have to bear with us because here we are at a crossroads in a disagreement, and we're trying to put heads and tails together and move forward, and that's why we're asking all the questions and hoping staff can help us out. You know, maybe Heidi can shed some light on this a little bit.
Sure. With the adoption in the last year and a half of these C3, the stormwater treatment facilities, we've been grappling with a way to do it in a manner that works well with the homeowners who eventually buy these homes. As these regulations require an area to drain water to that will be wet, we have as a city made a policy that we do not want, while we want this area to be in a centrally located place so that crews can go in and maintain and have easy access to it, it isn't usable for park area. So there, other communities have explored other means of addressing this, such as the planter strip, the South in Livermore experiment, if people are familiar with that, where you park along the street, get out and into a ditch, and that, all the water is from the streets and lots are drained into the ditch. That, that didn't work well. So that's why we decided to drain our water in the subdivisions to a central location next to the park. What I believe the issue is on this project is that they have reduced from your booklet this past week. If you look at lots one through six, they have pulled, they have very large rear yards, and so they've pulled that fence and they've, as close as possible and still meet setbacks to try to get additional land so that they can meet their park requirement, which we require of all projects, in addition to having the centrally located area to treat stormwater. There, at this point, even pulling lots lines in further than what you see on this plan, are still short additional land. So what Craig wants to do is ensure that we don't compromise our neighborhood park by allowing it to become a drainage detention. But we have to explore other options, perhaps, to meet the C3 requirements. And if that means maybe looking back at the planter strips, as was tried in Livermore and wasn't very successful, we're going to perhaps need to take a look at other setbacks throughout the subdivision and, and kind of maybe make a squeeze as well to, again, get that available land, hopefully next to the park for the detention and still keep our park requirement.
Question for you. What is required by, by ordinance? Is it 1.58, is it 1.62? What is the actual legal requirement that is turned into parks?
Well, we have a standard of five acres per 1,000 population, but this, I'm not sure what the math is on that, but-
Works out to half an acre on this project, half an acre.
But as part of the RGMP, they're given different categories, and they basically will, you know, it's kind of a menu where they get to-
By going above and beyond the requirement, they earn extra points.
What, what is that acreage?
Well, that's 1.62, that's-
That's what they propose.
Yeah, that's 1.62.
1.62.
And they got scored on that acreage.
There's something else, I'm sorry to interrupt, but there's something else to bring up on RGMP, which is the way the scoring works has nothing to do with how much park area is offered. It has to do with how much money the developer spends to improve the park. There's, and there was a budget that was presented at RGMP and approved, and those dollars were spent on those two little pocket parks that were shown in the original RGMP map, and they're still being spent. In fact, we're spending quite a bit more now because of additional requirements imposed by the Parks Department, such as surveillance cameras.
See, how much area, flat area of park do we have now?
We have the same as at RGMP, which is about 0.5 acres.
Question through the chair?
Sure.
Heidi, it strikes me as though, I mean, particularly when we're talking about the detention issues, when we're talking about a subdivision of this size, is that going to continue to be an ongoing battle, the same conversation we're having right now, as far as how do you resolve some of those issues? If you've got a park, how do you offset?
Well, we've been pretty successful up until this project in getting the centrally located areas for the C3 detention, separate from the park. And I think the next project that's coming along, they were able to, to do that. Just, you know, I know this, it's a late hour, this discussion has come up. The map that you see before you, just this past week, there's been additional kind of discussion of how that whole area parcels A changes, and so I don't believe that we have a-
I do have a, a drawing of that, I can show you if you're interested.
That we haven't presented to you, so just, I guess, we're seemingly, you're seemingly at a, I mean, kind of stuck on this issue.
Would it be feasible or possible to refer this item to the designer of use subcommittee and have all necessary departments and people be there? Or is that something that? That's just a question.
How about a second question on top of that?
Okay.
Realizing that 1.62 acres are required by the RGMP, can we simply change condition number 16 that says, that indicates that 1.62 acres is required by the RGMP and no permit shall issue until agreement as to that exact location, size, and makeup is agreed upon by the developer, Park and Recreation, and the Community Development Director?
And-
Puts it in limbo, but it puts it back in the city's lap, not in the developer to resolve it when we can move forward.
Right.
Yeah, I think the condition as written essentially may accomplish that same thing. What it's stating is that we need the minimum 1.62 acres. And it has to meet, to be designed and built to satisfaction of Director and Parks and Rec. And I think what Mr. Jacobson is arguing is the Director of Parks and Rec's determination that that park not be used as a detention facility.
Can we, no, no. Can we have a third party in there, that Community Development Director, that kind of mediate this whole thing?
Sure.
And it takes the agreement of the three to come up with a consensus on what that, because it, just reading it, looks like he, he has satisfied that, but obviously not.
You know, I think both sides have kind of weighed in as to what it is, and I think we need to move on, and let's just make a decision later on. Do you have any other conditions you're protesting?
No, I don't.
Great. Any other questions for the applicant?
Could, could the, could lots seven and eight be reconfigured so that, so that lot seven was made smaller, or, well, lot seven was pushed over to lot eight, and that opened up that area for the park?
Can I, can I show you the revision that we've been talking to Parks with? Would that be helpful now?
Sure.
It's, okay.
Is there a good one?
No.
Do you have an overhead?
Uh, here?
Is it already there?
Yeah.
It's not.
Well, no.
It's over. Can it, it's actual, it's this whole, uh, park.
It's time to set call.
We have sufficient information to make a decision based upon that. The only moving pieces.
Let's just move on. Here. Okay. was alluding to this earlier. What we've done is these lots, which used to be extra deep backing to Sand Creek, we've, we've pushed those property lines up as far as they can go. These are basically minimum setbacks on lots one, two, and three. And that's added additional area to parcel A. And this area right here is what's proposed to be the detention basin to satisfy our C3 requirement, which would be separate from these two little pocket parks. And we've also made an effort to make sure these two pocket parks are about the same as they were for RGMP approval. And this shows the comment that was raised by one of the commissioners, Arthur, to adjust lot seven, to kind of push it over, to kind of open up this area. That was incidentally also a comment that the Parks Department had. They wanted to provide better visibility to this portion of the trail. So we went ahead and did that. And lot eight has become quite a bit smaller as a result.
What kind, what kind of acreage are we talking about now? Do we meet the 1.62?
Well, no, it depends on how Parks will interpret that. I mean, we now offer over 1.8 acres of open space. Some of that's taken up by detention basin, though. What, what we were striving to accomplish with this was to make sure that the pocket parks were roughly the same size as they were when this project was approved for RGMP. So the 1.8 acre parcel includes two pocket parks, a C3 basin, a trail along Sand Creek, and Sand Creek itself. Sand Creek is almost entirely within this project's boundaries. Okay. Were you going to say something?
Yeah, I, I think what I'm having a difficulty with is that what we have before us is significantly different than what we've already, what you've just shown us and what some of the resolution may be. And I don't see, I don't, yeah, I mean, and my sense is, is that I don't have enough information to qualify a response because it appears as though some of the solutions you're coming up with, there's clearly not what's in front of us.
Well, I'm just trying to illustrate that I'm working, working with staff.
I agree.
See, what, what would happen is you'd impose a map condition on the project, and then if we exceed that with what we're, our final design is, well, that's just great.
So is staff, in conclusion, that this new layout satisfies the requirements of the park? And would it have significant changes on the property boundaries of the lots? And maybe Parks and Rec can talk about that as well?
Have you had any conversations with Craig regarding this area? Because my understanding, I've been off for the last few days.
I had a discussion with Craig Bronson. The additional 1.2, 1.82 or so forth does not meet the conditions that we have already expressed. That is that the park acreage should be 1.62 outside the Sand Creek flood control requirements. And so the 1.82, whatever it is, is, does not meet that condition. Because you have to deduct what that Sand Creek acreage is to come up with our requirements.
If I'm not mistaken, Dave, wasn't some of the Sand Creek easement as well considered in part of your calculations? Again, not, not, the city of Brentwood did not have fee title to this acreage.
Yeah, the, the entire parcel originally at our, when it was presented for RGMP was 1.62 acres, and that included an offer of dedication to the county of 45 feet, right?
The county is-
All of that was shown on the map at RGMP, though. There was, there was no intent, no sleight of hand or anything. It was, it was in the map. So I'm, I'm going to, forgive me if I'm being redundant, but the, the crux of the issue is this. When this project was approved at RGMP, there was a map presented. The map showed a parcel, 1.62 acres. The map labeled it as community park, but it also clearly showed Sand Creek running through it. That's what was approved. And-
Did it show a retention pond on it?
No, the retention pond was supposed to have part of the pocket parks.
Yeah.
There was nothing in the staff report and nothing in the resolution that required this project to provide 1.62 acres, nothing. But there was in my letter, a statement, and Craig was correct in citing that letter, I stated that this park would be 1.62 acres, but the map showed Sand Creek. So what we have here is, is a miscommunication, which I am responsible for, and I'm trying to, trying to rectify.
Okay. Thank you, I just want to make a motion, I mean, not a motion, but I want to ask a question to the individual planning commissioners, if you guys feel comfortable voting on this item, given the information that's come before us so far.
I'm ready to make a motion on it, if you're up comfortable. Although-
I'll hear the motion.
Well, it's, I guess I'm not going to make a motion, but by, by raise of hands, can I say that?
Can I clarify something, Don?
Sure.
I, what I'd like to see is, I'd like to see the planning department come back to us to work with Mr. Jacobson to go ahead and resolve this issue regarding the park. I, I think that we're, we're not in a position to make a motion to vote on this because we're going to, the way you talked earlier about throwing it back to the city to work with them, I think we should let them resolve it before we even discuss it.
But whether we do a motion or we let them resolve it, it's the same, same result.
No, I'd like to continue.
I would be of the same-
Or the same reason, let them resolve it.
Same mindset, just because there's so much involved with the area, the lots and the drainage, and obviously a, a differencing of opinions, and then us having to be right in the middle of it. It'd probably be to your benefit to continue it, I would think. So anyways, I think that there's enough people here that feel the same in mind-
Agreed.
That maybe we could have a motion made.
Well, we're not finished with the-
Okay. Oh, that's right, we, let's just go ahead and go through the public hearing as well.
Yeah, do you want to take public comment tonight?
Sure.
Okay.
Well, I was going to comment on a whole lot of different things, but after all this discussion, I actually believe that you all need to continue this project tonight. It's not when, it's not fair for you as the planning commission to have to deal with last minute changes that the developer is making and at such a late hour. And so- And so, that's what my recommendation is for you.
Great. Is there anyone also in the audience who would like to come forward?
Hello, I'm Mary Grimm with the Contra Costa Resource Conservation District, and also a member of Friends of Marsh Peak Watershed. And I first want to thank you guys, all of you, for all your good work. You get these dry documents, and you turn them into a vision, you envision how, what this, what Brentwood's going to look like, and how it's going to function, based on these dry documents. And I think you guys do a great job, and you're really on top of all the details. I feel like you're the stewards of Brentwood's future, and this discussion just shows, you know, how seriously you take that. I feel as though this period of time right now, this year, and the projects that are coming before you, this project and others that relate to the creek, Sand Creek or Marsh Creek, are really an incredible window of opportunity for you folks to help determine the future of Brentwood, and what kind of an image it creates to the public. Brentwood has four creeks going through it, and these comments are rather general, but there's a couple of things that pertain to this project, and I think pertain to many other, several others that are coming through as well. Most cities are really thankful if they get one creek. And you have four creeks, Marsh and Sand and Deer and so forth. I don't think it's an accident that Brentwood was situated at the confluence of these creeks. And I think that the parks and trails and recreation master plan that refers several times, in fact, many times, to a green network in its document, it talks about a network of greenways. And I think the creeks are part, or actually the natural network of greenways. And I guess my comments are throwing even one more, one more aspect, or one more wrinkle into this discussion about detention basins, usable flat park space. I guess what I'd like to say is that I think Brentwood has an opportunity to integrate really class, you know, world-class, state-of-the-art development with also cutting-edge restoration, creek restoration, riparian corridor restoration. Riparian corridor restoration was not even part of the considerations for this particular project. You guys are just struggling right now with the detention basin, C3 issues, and the flat park space. But I guess I would like to bring this up for your consideration, not only with this project, but with Carmel and several of the other projects, Pin Brothers, Bridle Gate that we just discussed, or that we'll be coming up with the commercial space, that there is an opportunity to do a, to make Brentwood known for a network of creek trails and shaded areas, a really lovely network of riparian corridors. I know that it's difficult for developers to integrate the, all the conditions that they have to deal with, with fish and game and U.S. wildlife, as well as dealing with park departments and all that. But I guess I want to say, I think it's worth it. And I think that Brentwood could be a model, not only for this area, but a model statewide or maybe even nationally. You've got an incredible opportunity with all these different creekside developments coming up before you in this year. And I guess I'm just saying that I hope that you think about the overarching vision, and the big picture, and Brentwood's future. And even if it may take a little longer to incorporate that issue of restoration, widening the channels to include creek restoration. And I guess one comment perhaps for the Parks Department is that those widened channels, and I'll show you, I'll pass around a couple pictures here, may be not flat active park space, but I think they can be considered passive park space.
We're going to give you one more minute.
I really meant to shorten...
Just because it's late.
Yeah. There's parts of Marsh Creek that have been widened, and that are beautiful, and are used by kids, are used by adults, there's little trails down close to the water. And I think it's worth considering those features, as well as just the detention basins and the flat park space. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that willing to come forward?
Thank you. I know it's late, I will be very brief. My name is Pat Zatello, I live on Sanford Court here in Brentwood. I don't want to get into the debate about flat usable parkland. I know my kids would be down in the creek catching fish and catching bugs, so I think that's a great part of what a park could be. In fact, I would encourage the planners to look at Sand Creek as, to encompass Sand Creek as part of the parkland. I think that would be a great idea. To me, that's more of a real park than a flat patch of grass. But again, I'm not going to get into that debate with Parks and Rec. But I must strongly disagree with the citing in the current plan of the detention basin along Sand Creek. I think that would be a horrible plan. Sand Creek is a wonderful resource. I think we should encompass it in a park, and I think we should, as we go through with this development, and I know developers are having a hard time, and I know this is a tough issue, but I think we really need to look at the creek as an incredible resource, and to protect it, and restore it, and enhance it, as it said in Appendix Nine of the Parks, Trails and Recreation Master Plan. So I think that needs to be kept in mind as we develop this parkland, and as we go ahead with this development. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner members. My name is Rich Walkley, I'm with the Natural Heritage Institute. We are based in San Francisco. We've been working for almost 10 years with the city of Brentwood to restore marsh sand, deer, and dry creeks. And my comments are in that longstanding spirit of collaboration. I am also the author of Appendix 10 of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, commonly referred to as the Marsh Creek Corridor With Report. The city has a longstanding history of articulating its obligation to restore Marsh Creek in its general plan, its environmental goals, and its action programs. I'll refer to restoring marsh and sand creek. Additionally, the Creeks Trails and Revegetation Master Plan, further details, vision for the city to restore the creek. And Appendix 10 was intended as a parcel-by-parcel recommendation for how to achieve these master plan goals, and the creekside, the creek trails and master revegetation plan goals. I'm going to forego most of my comments, because it's my hope that the commission will defer this for further deliberation with the staff, and it seems that that seems to be the way that this is going. I will add to the debate that this issue of whether or not creeks can be counted as park space is not unique to this parcel. This will come up over and over again. With all due respect, Director Bronson's interpretation of that is based on a city ordinance that refers specifically to detention basins. It's very clear that detention basins cannot be considered park space. There is no statement in this or any other ordinance whether or not creeks, or even floodable areas of creeks, can be considered park space. And I would just recommend that the city see council to find some clarification on this issue, either from the city attorney or from the city council, as to whether this ordinance referring specifically to detention basins also applies to creeks. Because I think, in my vision of parks, creeks are an integral part to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to speak on this item? Okay, we're going to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Let's make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Russell, second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And before we make a motion, though, I think that we owe the developer, and the architect, and some staff some feedback on the other items tonight, right now, as far as what our thoughts and feeling are on the architecture, as well as the tentative subdivision map. So if this item does get continued, it's not coming out of left field for them next time. So with that being said, Russell, would you like to start us off?
Okay. I won't expect an answer now, but one of the questions I had was, on pages A13, 14, and 15 in Plan Two, there's a huge space on a, one of the elevations that has absolutely, has a place for a window, but there's nothing there. Just wondering why a window wasn't stuck in there. I don't know what's inside of that area. Perhaps next time, pages A25 and 27, there's elevation, but there's no floor plans. Maybe those can be included in our, in what we receive, material we receive. The other comments I had is, the EIR is positive, I like that. I really like the third car garage, optional in-law. I think that's really just a neat option. Your banding is good. Page A19, it has a den option in the floor plan, but it doesn't have a door going into the living room. And if it's a den, it seemed like it should have a door going into the living room, rather than out into the hallway, or whatever it is in the backside there. I like the duet. I think it's really neat, because from either angle, it looks like a single-story family home. It doesn't look like the typical duplex where you have mailboxes next to each other and doors next to each other. So I really like the duet plan. As far as the creek, I lived in Martinez, where we had real creeks flowing out to the bay. I used to be down inside of it. To me, if I had to say I wanted to have a park, I'd want to play down in the creek. I'd want to play with the mugs and the pollywogs, and we used to catch fish with our hands coming up. Right in the patrol car years ago in Pacheco, I talked to someone whose parents live in Pacheco, and their grandparents remember ocean-going vessels coming up and picking up grain in Pacheco. Now it's a creek. If you don't use it, you lose it. And that's what's happened to Pacheco. They've got a little tiny creek now, but they used to have ocean-going vessels pulling up into Pacheco to pick up grain. So I have some sympathy with the creeks, but I understand the parking wrecks, so somewhere there has to be some middle ground that people smarter than we can resolve, I'm sure. That's all I got.
Great. Julie?
I have a few things. I agree with you, I like the architecture of the duet, so I think that turned out really nice. It almost looks like one huge house with two separate entrances, so that's nice. I had a couple of questions in the detailing of the buildings. I know that some of our architectural standards, which, well, they haven't been adopted yet, but we actually do more of a wraparound of some of the materials in regards to some of the stonework and so on. And it looks like from some of the elevations that I've looked at, the stone just ends maybe two feet on each side of the building. In different cases, it's, you know, it's a little different. But I would hope to see that actually, you know, ending past the fence line or something, so that, you know, the house feels as a whole, and not necessarily, you know, as just a facade, and then you don't really get much detailing on the sides of the building. And that was in Plan Two for the French elevation, cottage elevation. And a question I had in regards to the Spanish eclectic, in the rear elevation, there's just one set of shutters. So it doesn't really feel like they really add any design element to the back of the building. It's just kind of blank, and then you just have a couple shutters. Let me see. In regards to, in regards to the creek, I agree. I mean, I have a couple little kids that, I agree with you, Russell, they'd love to be down in the creek playing. It'd be fun to incorporate the creek actually into the park, so that, you know, people with children, obviously, they would need to be supervised, but could enjoy, you know, frogs and tadpoles and all that stuff that we don't really have the opportunity to enjoy anymore. I had one question, actually in regards to the floor plan, and I know this really isn't the place to discuss it, maybe this is something at design review, I don't know if it would ever come back. But on Plan One, when you enter the building, there's a fireplace to your left. It's right in the direct route of traffic. And I would just think with designing around a fireplace right in the main entry and in the flow of traffic, it just seems kind of like an odd place to have a fireplace. So that was pretty much it. One other little thing I had in regards to the park, and I know the park's a major issue, is having shade. Because I know the trees are always really small, and, you know, somehow we could incorporate some shade structures or something in that park, that would be great. And that's all. Thanks.
Great. Art?
I think that these two have voiced everything I can think of. I didn't think about the trees. But you're a strong proponent of that, so you push that cause for us. But I think that the big thing for us is this park issue. I looked at the plans, and, you know, I think that the plans themselves are really well-drawn, and they add a lot. They will add a lot to this subdivision. I think we just have to work around parcel A. And I think that, I have nothing specific to add to that.
Okay. Great. Jim?
I like all the variety, specifically on the roof lines. The project really looks great from the street. I've got some concerns on the, some of the rear elevations. Some of them tend to look pretty plain, and it may just be the articulation on the drawings that we've got. I really love the porches, particularly on the French elevation, Plan Three. Clearly, we've got some issues as it relates to the, some of the setbacks on eight, and obviously, the developer's trying to mitigate the issues relative to parcel A. I would also personally argue that we may want to look at some type of a, kind of an established precedent as it relates to properties that abut any number of the creeks that we have, you know, going through town, to establish some kind of a standard which is an exception to the norm. I mean, clearly, we're battling with that at this point. I would consider that this property, because of its location, has a little bit different standards which may be attached to it because of that, as opposed to something within the interior that does not abut, you know, directly to a, to the creekside. And other than that, those are the only comments I have.
Great. Jim, thank you.
Could I make one last question?
Sure.
Before you close. I heard the term environmentally sensitive area earlier, and when I golf, and I see that sign that says stay out. And realizing that a creek is a natural attraction to any kid that gets there, if there's a park there, I would hate to see a little fence or a sign saying environmentally sensitive, stay out. This is not a park or something. You know, just an opinion. I would not like to see those things put off bounds. That's it.
For me, the architecture was fine, the circulation was fine. My only concern was that lot eight, you know, maybe that seven disappears, and that eight gets, works out better. And then, you know, I hope we can get this resolved. And I can't point the finger at the applicant, you know, it's also staff, because, you know, you've asked us to approve something, and there's not even a retention pond shown in any of the drawings. So we would have been looking at this, approving something that didn't even show a retention pond, thinking all along that this was just a park. So it's kind of frustrating for me, and it's kind of where we're at. And so with that being said, someone like to make a motion?
I think the motion will be that we continue the, all three of the, pardon me for just a second, that we continue resolution number 0654. Can I do these all in one lump?
Sure.
We continue resolution number 064 regarding the mitigated negative declaration. We continue resolution number 064, 06-40 regarding the rezone 0520. We continue resolution number 0641 regarding the vested tentative subdivision map, number 8982. And we continue resolution... And we continue resolution number 0642 regarding design review number 0525.
Could, Damien, Heidi, can we go ahead and condition this to appear before us at the next planning commission meeting?
We were just talking about that. If we do, the packet is prepared Friday. It's coming out to you.
We've got the issues by then.
Okay, so we'll just make the motion to continue it and then hopefully you can put it on the next available agenda.
Right. Could I?
Sure.
A possible solution would be to continue it. I guess the options for yours, to continue it indefinitely. The second option would be to continue it to the next meeting, which we're likely not going to be able to make. I mean, in the event we weren't, we could always, again, continue that two weeks forward. And that gives us probably more flexibility in scheduling to do it that way. Continue to the date served in the 20th.
Great.
To continue to the next planning commission meeting of June 20th?
Right, but clearly with the understanding to the developer that the packet is going out Friday and that would mean that some very diligent action on his as well as Art and Park.
Maybe the applicant can spend a few words real quick.
I just wanted to say staff has been terrific on this project and if they're willing to do what it takes to get to the next commission, I am also.
Okay, great, thank you. So with that being said, we have a motion, we have a second?
I'll say it.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes 5-0. It's not quite 11 o'clock yet, so we're going to go ahead on to item number eight. Which is a public hearing. It's a rezone request to establish development standards for an approximately 37-acre site, a vested tentative subdivision map to subdivide the site into 102 single-family dwellings and four affordable duets to be known as Carmel Estates, and a 1.7-acre neighborhood park and a design review for house plans located east of Minnesota Avenue, south of Carmel Parkway, and west of Union Pacific Railroad. A negative declaration for this project has been prepared pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act to assess potential environmental impacts. The applicant is Polte Homes, and again, this is Jeff Sils' project.
One second here.
Sure.
Okay. Again, this, this is another residential development that is before you. It's requiring, requiring three entitlements.
Okay, is it better? Sorry. It's, or three entitlements are needed to get this through. The first one is the rezone. This is, I'm confused and I don't know where my other little map is that shows the entire PD 26 zone. It's part of PD 26. It's plan development number 16 of PD 26, of which the entire area has been pretty much developed. There's a couple lots left, or a couple area, planning areas that still need to be developed that are further up along Minnesota. This is along Minnesota and Sand Creek and in that area of the, of the city. And that P, planning area 16 is one that has not yet developed other than coming before you tonight, and therefore it never had development standards. So the applicant is coming forward to have that as part of this, this approval. And that is they're, they're going to be providing them stands for the 100 and, for a total of 102 single-family homes and then four affordable homes, which are, happen to be two sets of duets, basically the same, the corner lot type developments that will be, that you just previously saw, they're previously saw, they're the same type out here. They're going to be, there is one set right along here in the corner and the other set is right, right in here. This happens to be Minnesota right over here. The project fronts Minnesota and Carmel Parkway, which comes down and ends up in the core down here. And then below it is Randy Way, which comes through and serves single-family homes in here with a, a street that happens to be stops, dead ends right about here, Randy Way as well. As I said, there's 102 single-family and two sets of duets. There is roughly 37 acres out here that's, that this is being divided into. And the development standards apply to this, this development only at this time. There are set, there are standards for 7,000 square foot lots, for 10,000 square foot lots, and also 20,000 square foot lots. This PD had a requirement when it was originally developed and of that the lots along here had to be a minimum of 25, 20,000 square feet because they were up against existing one-acre lots or larger. And then the lots along here and along Minnesota had to be 10,000 square feet, of which, a minimum 10,000, which they are. And then developers come back with the rest of them, somewhere between 7 and 10,000 square feet that fill in the rest of this development. There are entrances off of Carmel Parkway here, here, and a secondary entrance off of here. Okay, let's see if I got it. The second part of this is the tentative map approval. Entitlement would be for that. There are, this, as you can see here, there, the original RGMP that they had out here gave them approval for 93, 93 lots for single-family homes. And then there were 10 lots that were set aside for affordable, which gave them a total of 103 lots for the original RGMP. However, at the time, the, the affordables were taken out of the equation, so they were given approval to have 93 single-family lots and then whatever they could work into, as long as it didn't go above 103. So they're, they're, they worked out their affordability requirement to be four, so they now, there's 97 shown on this lot. And that's why the plan has a kind of a, it shows lots here, but they have to come back with another RGMP application to take care of these nine lots that are here, which they have done. They've submitted that application and we're going through the process. So that is a condition out there on the map as well, that they do that. And they're, they are working towards that to come back and finish off this development with this, these nine lots right here. But the entire development was, is a total of 106 lots for, for them. Like I said, there's entrances off of Carmel Parkway, two main entrances here and one secondary entrance here. This development is being proposed by the applicant for private streets with gated community, two gates here that would be, there's no attendance, there would be key or card gates or remote control somehow, it's going to be operated that way. These two entrances do have the ability that if one happens to mistakenly turn down here and come down this way, they, they can get around and get out without having to go through, you know, you can't go through the gates obviously if they don't have the ability to open them. So those are, are worked into the plan there. This one over here unfortunately does not have that ability, so this would be, if someone happens mistakenly turning this one down here and not having the ability to open the gate, they would have to kind of back out or jockey around before they came out and went on, on their way to get around over into this area. But they are, it is a private street proposed development with gates to it. There will be pedestrian access back here to come back. And this is the park area that's being proposed back here. There is a detention basin proposed right along in this area and here. And then the rest of it is going to be open land for the park. It will link across here through the bridge, the Penn Brothers who happens to be on this side is building. You'll have linkage to come all the way into the downtown area. And then they're part of this development, they are improving the pathways leading up north to this area. And then you would cross over to head south, you'd cross over the bridge and head south along Marsh Creek. And part of their proposal is that they're improving this, these, are these trailways up in this area. But you have access to the park through here, public access through here, as well as private access through the development to the park as well. The third part of this develop, or this project is a design review. They include six models. There's two Plan Five variations that will be used, it could be, it will be constructed on these 102 lots. And then the duets, they also have duet plan that is being proposed, that would take care of their affordability requirement. The plan, there's, there are two single-story plans and four two-story plans. They do meet their one-plan-per-25-lot standard. And the home's been designed to provide a mix of elevations which are influenced by the different styles of architecture that they're going to be introducing here. They have quite a few, in fact, more than I've seen in most developers as far as the, the types of architecture they'll be featuring. They are consistent with the development standards, with the exception of five and six guideline, which is the 10% of the total subdivision have side entry garages. They need to add another plan, side entry plan to meet that. They're one short there. And number six, there are some plans that the belly banding is not included on all the sides. So we were asking that they do that to those plans that are where it's missing and add that to that. The other issue out here is that Polte is proposing a maximum building height of 36 feet, four inches for the Plan Four model. And then all the other plans range anywhere from 26 to 32. This whole development out here, including this area, planning area, as well as what's been built before, the maximum height out there was 30 feet for any plan out there. So we're, we're recommending that, that 30 height be kept out there. And if that's, and if the commission would like to allow them the higher heights, then we need to make some changes to the, the conditions of approval in the resolution reflecting that, that the one that talks about the development standards and to make the changes, that we would allow them to go up higher than the 30-foot is what staff's recommending. So that if, if that's the direction, make sure you make that change to the, to the I believe, oh, there is, again, we have another agenda review. There are some changes to the conditions of approval, same as the last. I pulled out the entire list and made the changes. We do have letters from, again, the folks that, that as far as the natural heritage, the friends of Marsh Creek, Joan Douglas, and then Craig Bronson's letter addressing the issues to natural heritage have been included in your packet, as well as we got one from the Department of Toxic Substance Control, which really, they just kind of were curious about what this project was like and, and what, they made some, some, some requests that, that the secret document make sure it covered, and I believe that it has for their request. With that, I will, I think that's it. I will turn it back over to the chairman for questions. I know the applicant is here and is willing to be available for any questions or, or comments or, or presentation that you would request.
Great, thank you, Jeff. I'd like to just start off by if we can address Bailey Neff's comments.
Oh, that's right.
Original part about the posting of the sign.
Yeah, I wrote those down and I apologize, I meant to, meant to do that. When this project, this project's been around for over a year now. And when the project was originally proposed and came in, there was a sign up there. I have not been by there in probably a month, I will admit that, so I don't know if the sign is still standing. I don't know, you know, what was, it's possible they get knocked down after a while and maybe no one noticed it was knocked down and I, I don't know what this, what the case may be. But there was a sign up there at one time that talked about this application coming forward to the, to planning commission and ultimately the council.
And what about the letters going?
Letters? He had submitted a list of folks who he had, his petition was, they were, he was soliciting comments on having access onto Minnesota. He did provide us with a list of, of, after you took care of the duplicates, there was about 113 names on that list, of which I think, if I remember my numbers right, about two-thirds of those were covered in the, our 300-foot radius list, which is what we're required to notice. Yes, there were some people on his list that didn't get mess because they were outside that limit that we, we noticed.
Okay.
But that, the guidelines that he talked about, that he was not privy to, as far as what the planning, planning area 16 is before you tonight, he can accept those, he can reject them, and when his project comes forward, he can make changes to them. But they are specifically for what Polte is proposing tonight. They were not intended to include his, or be applied to his project unless he wanted them to. So that's, he can make the change and we can revise the, the guidelines when he comes forward with his project. And then the noticing of him himself, he was on our list of notices. I don't know, I can't guarantee that he got them, but he was on our list and the notice was sent to him at his address in Brentwood.
And it was in a newspaper, is that correct?
That's correct. Newspaper, it's posted in the city, it's, it's on the webpage. Yeah, so there's several different ways that, that someone can.
Okay, great, thanks. Anyone have any questions for Jeff? Art?
I think so too. The, the standards that you identified, number five and six are covered in the conditions.
Yes.
The 36-foot height is covered in the conditions, or 30-foot.
30-foot is, that's correct, yes. If you want to change that, then you need to make it.
Right.
Allow the developer to go higher than 30 feet, that's correct.
My question is, your sign, if this is a gated community, then the homeowners will be responsible for the streets?
That's correct.
The sidewalks?
That's correct.
Sewer lines, water lines?
Everything, once it goes inside the development.
On the side, they're, they're responsible for that. Is there some kind of economies of scale?
No, not sewer and wa, I apologize, not sewer and water. The sewer and water is, is the city's responsibility.
Is it?
Yeah.
Is there some kind of economies of scale? Because I mean, it would seem to me it would be pretty expensive to maintain a street.
Well.
Rather than speaking of, you got just over 100 homeowners.
The homeowners association has to provide for that possibility, you know, and create funds that would, money from, they collect goes into those funds to repave roads and do repairs and stuff like that. That's part of having a homeowners association.
And what happens if they don't? Does the city step in?
Typically, they wouldn't, but they could.
The fencing on, on the east side where the park is, it's a gated community.
Mm-hmm.
And we've got a somewhat amazing wall on the west side and on the north side.
We have, yes, along here, sound wall along Minnesota, and it wraps around and goes all the way down to Park, Carmel Parkway and ends down here.
Okay. Now, we also have fencing on the, on the south side.
Yeah, you have, you start here at the creek, at the end of this guy's property, and it runs along here, up and over and ties in.
So being a gated community, all we're doing is giving access to auto. They, anybody could walk into the park and walk into this subdivision, right?
Yeah, they, they could come in this way, walk down, play in the park, and they could walk around this development should they want to.
Okay.
Yes, you are correct. Vehicular access is gated at these three points.
Now, then, a safety issue, Art, if, if it's a gated community, not from Minnesota, Minnesota, someone falls in and, so there's going to be enough room for them to fall off of Minnesota and find out that it's gated. And then, from safety standards, who's liable if they decide to back out and get in?
That I don't know. It would be a question that the city attorney might want to ask. I know, I'm not sure who it'd be, whether it'd be the homeowners association, the driver, the driver who hit them.
Engineering probably.
I don't know who.
I want to address the liability issue, but the engineering department doesn't particularly care for that, that access point off Minnesota, nor do we think it's necessary. I believe there's a condition included that the applicant will work with the engineering department to reconfigure that, that access point, and I believe that the developer is okay with that condition. And I believe that the developer is okay with that condition.
I didn't see it.
Yeah, I didn't see it.
We could certainly add one if it's not included in the packet, but the intent is.
It'd probably be the one that, with the agenda review packet, that's the word, and I, I don't know.
Anyway, the, the intent is that that access point will probably go away since we, we do have an EVA point to access this subdivision if need be.
And, and the skies of the park, you know, we don't have the same issue with the, no.
No, we don't.
Is there, I saw that the maximum lot coverage was 40%.
I believe you're correct on that, yes.
Explain to me, why, why is it that we see 45% on some, 45% on single?
Single stories. The, the past practice by the commission has been allowed to, they would allow single-story homes because obviously they cover more and it's hard to, to get them on a smaller lot. They will allow the single, single-story homes to go up to a maximum of 45% lot coverage, but the two-story homes could only, would be a maximum of 40%.
If this one's standard for this one, it's 40% period?
Yep. They're designing the home to fit the lot that they have and it, it, it goes no higher than 40%.
Yeah, if I can just add on to that, um, this has relatively larger lot sizes than perhaps some of the others that have the 45.
Jim? Yeah. Jeff, on, this is on three, on the staff report. When it's talking about a purchase of a 10-acre conservation easement in the agricultural core area, what does that offset? Or what is that actually, what's the value?
That's scored them points on their IGMP to give them more, more points to, to, for approval.
Okay.
Yeah.
A tentative map, the tentative subdivision map, and it says, in addition, city subdivision ordinance requires design review to be considered concurrent with any tentative map request of this size. What's the actual size cutoff? Is it, is it an acre size or?
Well, no, it, there is no, as my knowledge, there's no acre size. It's just that it's a, it's a vested tenant map which has to have the design review with the development.
Okay. I just, I think the language was, it's based on this size and I'm going, yeah, I'm going, well, it doesn't, I haven't seen it before. So the issue as it relates to Minnesota Avenue then is taken care of? Or we need to have language that's contained?
Eighteen, did you find it?
Is it? Okay, cool.
Yes, condition number 18 on your, your packet.
When they're talking about providing sewer access from Minnesota, must connect to sewer lines on this project. Is everything sized properly for it?
Yes, it has.
Have you Jason probably?
Yes, it has been.
That was it. Thank you.
Any other questions? I got one that's kind of, I don't know if it's, it's an interesting question for engineering and Parks and Rec. You know, usually you see the C3 requirements a lot with the commercial and you're seeing the detention basins and you kind of have to weigh the park, detention basin, you know, it's a requirement of the county, you know, the C3. Can the city say, you know what, we'd rather have more park, let's just get rid of the detention basin? Just to be Della's advocate, can we do that?
Sure, I think that's a great idea.
I believe, and Paul, correct me, I think the regional water quality is a statewide agency and it's actually delegated down from the federal government.
I thought I'd just take a chance that we could get more park area.
Not optional.
Okay.
That's correct, it's mandated by federal, which then mandates a state, state mandates us. And we're signatory to the county-wide discharge permit, which we do have to implement C3 requirements to the best of our abilities. And how we choose to do so, we do have a certain degree of flexibility, so.
Brentwood's so good at getting pipes in the ground though, you know, you'd want to put the water in there. Anyways, moving on.
I have a question.
Okay, go, go ahead, Russell.
One of the issues that you have is the 33 feet for some of the building heights, indicating that the 30-foot is the standard. Unless I misread it, PD 26, 17.476.064, section seven says that homes over 25 feet may have a maximum height to 35 feet. Did I misread that? In the zoning for the PD 26 requirements that I've got at home.
What you just said, can you read that again?
Sections, PD 26, within PD 26, section 17.476, or .064, section seven, homes over 2,500 square feet, maybe I'm misreading it, may have a maximum height of 35 feet.
Well, that whole area is divided up into subareas.
I, I understand that, we're developing.
I don't know, I, I don't know which one this relates to.
And I, and I don't either. But within PD 26, we have homes already approved by ordinance at 35 feet.
I don't believe any have ever been built above 30 feet.
I don't know. It allows up to 35 feet.
I think everybody had proposed.
I don't know.
I, I have to look, I, I'm sorry, I don't know that.
Okay, yeah, I just, just in your staff report, you ended together, there were no, there were no standards for anything over 30 feet. And it seems that I, I found something that, that allows 35 feet of the section I just quoted. And, uh, after finding that, I really don't have a problem with the 33. The 36 I made because it really does exceed our standard. But 35 seems to be within the ability of both our, our ability to grant it, but within the written ordinances.
Yes, as you're creating standards, you could create whatever you would like. I don't know the history of, at what point in, in time we've kind of developed that 30-foot standard. That's now one of our kind of 10 design, residential design guidelines. But Damian pulled up the code in other areas of, there is at least one other area of this, so 16 subareas in this PD and there's at least one that has 35 feet, so.
That was quick.
35 feet. So my question is, it already exists, so it not only is permissible for us to set a standard, but it already is within PD 26, even though maybe not this area, but we're developing this area now. Okay, that's my question.
Any, any more questions? Okay, let's open the public hearing with the applicant, like to make a presentation and then we'll follow it up with questions.
Well, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Roger Miller, I work for Polte Homes, 6210 Stone Ridge Mall Road, fifth floor, Pleasanton, California, 94588. With me at my side, I have Johnny Atkins, Polte's manager of architectural production, Andrea Valanca, Carlson Barbie and Gibson Civil Engineers, Robert Moat, of Robert Moat Associates, Landscape Architect. And I want to thank, thank you for hearing us today and also I thank everyone in the audience for hanging in there. I feel like, I feel like I'm giving out one of those buttons they used to give out Candlestick Park at, at Night Games, Extra Night Games was of, the, the, the Candlestick, it'd be Cody Brentwood, I guess. Tonight, I want to bring you Carmel Estates. Our vision for this project is to serve those who are looking for the ultimate destination in Brentwood. Third, fourth, move-up buyer, who loves the Brentwood community, but is looking for something extra special for their dream home. Our research concluded that this particular market was, this particular buyer was underserved in this area. And we just felt that there was no other project in town that was specifically designed to meet those folks who were, meet that description. The hour is late, so I'm not going to go over some of the things. I want to thank the staff for the great job they always do in preparing the staff report and working with us throughout the project to create a project that works for everybody. I've read the staff report and conditions and agree substantially with them, except for a couple little issues that I'll talk about. And items are minor but important. For, for right now, I just want to make sure that, that the entire, whole idea of the project was to create something really special, to create some, a place where we could, I'd be really proud of it here at Brentwood. The, uh, let's see here. Here, here are the items I want to talk about. Let's talk about the house heights first because I think I'd like to get that done with. Before I, I, I'm very interested in the fact that you found that, that exception to the, or that particular item on the old PD. We in fact have taken all of the projects, the item, the, the plans that were over height, and we have redesigned them to meet 30 feet. And I, I have them here if you want to look at. So I was prepared tonight to accept the condition as it is. However, you know, if, they're still very good designs. They're not, I would say, not as, they're, the old ones are more narrowly perfect, these are just perfect. But I'd like, if, if you're interested in going up to the 35, we can move, we can take Plan Four down to 35. Or if you'd rather, and I understand totally on the precedent that you would want to avoid that, I'm okay with the 30 feet. We will add another side loader as requested by the conditions. Keeping, keeping with a promise to our neighbors to the south. And one of the things I wanted to also point out that we spent a great effort trying to communicate with our neighbors to the north and our neighbors to the south. Neighbors in the north being the Lions Groves and the neighbors to the south being the Randy Way folks. We've met with both parties a number of times and have come up with great ideas. For instance, one of the ideas, I came out during one of the Lions Groves meetings was the fact that Carmel Parkway, if we were to build on the south side, the north side would not look balanced, it wouldn't look quite as good. And we volunteered to go ahead and landscape and add lighting to both sides of Carmel Parkway within the right-of-way so that the Carmel Parkway would be balanced and symmetrical and look like it was planned going in so that it would look like, it would look like it was meant to be that way. And we really want to make sure that this, our entrance looks very good. On the south side, with our neighbors to the south against our 20,000-square-foot lots there, and specifically relating to condition 10 of the tentative map, I'm requesting that we allow to build that Maestor New Wall. Condition 10 speaks to, in our RGMP, we promised that there would be a wall along the south side there. I've had extensive talks with the folks who are contiguous to us. And short, long story short, we agreed that the wall on the, would be a minimum of six foot eight. And that is counting, that's from the Carmel side. And then, because we have a bit of retaining along there, the other side would be, would range from six foot eight to up to four feet more depending on how much retaining. And we've talked about, and this is what the owners down there have just desired. So I want to make sure that that was something that you noted in your, our notes here because technically, over six feet needs to be noted as a variance to the standard conditions of approval, which the city requires that we all.
Jeff, on the conditions on that, on the new conditions, what condition number would that be? Okay.
I'm sorry.
It wasn't 10.
I, I didn't get the new conditions. Okay. We've also had discussions with the, regarding, regarding the handling of sheet flow drainage, which now flows from the Randy Way folks onto the Beederman property to the west of Lori Drive, which is the, where the emergency entrance is going to be. We've agreed with those neighbors, because there's no drainage easement, that we will have all the drainage facilities on our property. To the east of Lori Drive, where there is a drainage easement, we will upgrade those drainage facilities so that condition 10 is met.
Roger, real quick, you said you didn't get a copy, the conditions, you haven't read them, are you comfortable with that?
Excuse me. I didn't get a copy of the.
He doesn't have a copy.
I didn't get a copy of the addendum that you.
But, but you've reviewed them and you're okay with, with all of them except for the ones that you're mentioning now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Let's see here. The other thing I wanted to ask about, and I've talked to Craig about this, and at all the other upscale neighborhoods we've done in other cities, we have instituted a program of front yard landscaping installation that allows the homeowner to install their, design and install their own landscaping under strict guidelines that we put together under a strict set of rules and procedures for design, plant checking and whatnot. We, what happens is that there's a set aside in escrow for the money that we would have spent to put the landscaping in. They have six months to complete their work. If they don't do it within six months, Polte steps in and installs the landscaping on their own, based on the typical landscaping that you have in your packets. In a nutshell, it works great. People have put in their own personalized designs, they tend to spend more money than the allowance. Everything looks good right from the beginning and, and continues to get better as time goes on. I talked to Craig about this and he feels that unless there is a issue that you guys think that might be a problem, he's willing to work with us to create this program and allow us to move forward as long as we understand, and I'm saying that I do, that he would not, he would not accept us getting track acceptance until all the, the front yards are done. And I'm okay with that. Did I, does that make sense to everybody? In other words, no track acceptance until all the, all the front yards are done. People will be able to design and install their own front yards using strict landscape guidelines that we give them. And it works out great. And I, I have a CD full of pictures of other subdivisions we've done, but I don't know if that's really necessary, that you guys are okay with that. Okay, I wanted to, I wanted to mention about the sign. Last time I saw the sign was last Wednesday, it was up. So, for whatever that's worth, I, I really don't, you know, if, if it gets knocked down, if I find out about it, which I don't remember ever having, having had done since it's been up, we, we would get it fixed right away. Okay. Last, I'd like to acknowledge the letter received by NHI and the Friends of the Creek. First, I want to say that Polte has been and continues to be a supporter of creek restoration, revegetation. As evidenced by our work at Four Seasons Creekside Park, Estates at Sand Creek and Somerset. I have, throughout this project, design face sought counsel though from the city as to what the city wants with regard to the park on the western, eastern edge of our project. We have created together a vision of a public relation, public recreation improvement, which not only blends well into the vision that we had for our project, but also meets the goals of Parks and Recs, this jurisdiction this is in. Furthermore, we didn't want to. Furthermore, we didn't want to interfere with anything having to do with flood control because flood control issues were very sensitive last winter. And we wanted to make sure that we didn't do anything that would fuss with that. In other words, first Brentwood, then flood control. We met with the NHI group in January and we showed them our plans and offered to provide as much vegetation, other habitat enhancements that could be possibly doable within the context of our park and our large drainage swale, detention basin, if you, different. It's really like a long swale that's supposed to, that's supposed to be a bio, biofiltering swale. And I liked Dawn's idea of turning into the park, but I'm afraid water quality won't last. They rejected any notion that we provided to them other than a two-stage channel. And by the way, I just want to make sure that any enhanced landscaping, habitat restoration on our property, we're still okay with. I've talked to the city about this at length. Two things. One is that if, they were pretty clear with me that, and like Craig's memo says, the appendices of the trail plan are recommendations. They're not mandatory. And in this case, because, and I don't know if you can see here, but on the north end of our project, there is a railroad trestle, bridge over a construction, really construction point. At the south, we have private property. So widening the creek between those two very small points, or close together points, it doesn't make a lot of sense in this case. In this case, I'm, you know, I'm a real advocate of creek restoration, but in this case, it doesn't, doesn't make sense. So the project, kind of, when it comes to a project of this type, it seems to me a more coordinated, global design, funding program would work a lot better and I would support that a hundred percent. But to do it piecemeal like we're being asked to do, just, it's counterintuitive. It doesn't, it's not going to be the kind of project that really they're trying to achieve. You can do it piece by piece by piece. Yeah, I'd love to work with these guys in the future on our future projects, but in this one, it's just, it doesn't make sense. I want to speak to a couple of specific letter comments. I, yeah, the C three handbook allows the kind of drainage soil that we put in there. It's interesting that Heidi mentioned South Livermore. We were the guys who installed those grassy soils. And as Heidi mentioned, it's become a kind of a public works mecca for showing public works folks how not to do it. And it's just because the soils in this area are not conducive to the kinds of BMPs that they're talking about here as far as C three issues. This particular one, based on our experience, is going to be the best for this particular application. Regarding the sighting of a burrowing owl mentioned in the letter, we take our owls very seriously. We sent our biologist out there right after we heard about that. And he did a, made some observations, did a report. I sent it in to Jeff today. Bottom line, there's no owls in residence on the project. So at this point, I want to just review that we think that this particular project is going to be a great one in town. We, I want to mention that we we were just recently recognized not, for Rose Garden, for instance, as the best neighborhood in town by the Brentwood Press. And I want to just say that we were awarded the best, the best master plan community by our peers in the kind of Oscars thing that we had last year. And what we're trying to do here is we're trying to better ourselves. We're trying to do better than we did in Rose Garden. And I'm hoping that I can get your support for this and ask you for your vote. And we'll step back and if you have any questions, I will be glad to have myself or my team.
Craig, anyone have any questions? Go ahead, June.
Roger, when you're talking about the program that you do for the individual property owners, I mean, this is strictly just soft landscape. We're just talking plants. I mean, all of the, relative to the pathways that you have here with the put in place, is that part of the landscaping or are you?
When you mean pathways, you're talking about the?
Yeah, other siding on some of the, some of the homes with the pathways that you've got.
Right, no, the pathways would be required to get into the units for occupancy. It would be up to the, if they wanted to alter those, take them out and put in something different, that would be part of the new plan.
But the streetscape as far as the curbs and the actual trees that are there, that would not be up to the individual?
The planter strips, it would be from sidewalk back.
Russell, go ahead.
We're going through a lot of different issues tonight, but just run real quick one. The duet on tab number nine. I don't know if you want to show that or not, but it shows a duet, it shows a first floor plan. I'll let you go ahead and get that out.
Yes.
Your unit to the right, the two-story unit, it has a garage and a living room. And having lived in duets like this or townhouses, townhomes, could you reverse, put the garage where the living room is, the living room where the garage is? And what that does, it gives you a sound barrier for the entire downstairs between the two units because you have an empty space, a garage, and then your stairwell acting as a sound buffer between the two apartments. Upstairs, you have no adjacent house to it because it's a single story on the left side. So that entire unit, however many you build of these, would be absolutely almost soundproof because you'd have that garage and the stairwell is separating the two dwellings. Just food for thought. That's all.
Okay. This is Johnny Atkins, our architectural manager.
Good evening. We could possibly do that for you. The only comment that we would say about that is they would have garage sounds right near a bedroom. That's your bedroom three with the single story. But it's not too far fetched for us to do something like that.
Yeah, I have a friend that has one like this.
How's the sound for the single story unit?
I don't know, I'm on the other side. My friend is. Food for thought.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
Do you have any, I have questions for Roger, but did you?
Yeah, I have them for Roger too. Thank you.
Go ahead, Art.
Two questions. Condition number ten, you talked about it and it probably went by me and I didn't catch it on the rebound, but you talked about the masonry wall in the southern property, southern project boundary. Did you specify a height on that?
Yes, I did. Then to be clear, having met with them just recently, the one thing we were very clear about is that they wanted to make sure that it was one course higher than the regular six feet because one of the key issues on the Randy Way folks who are contiguous is privacy. And the idea of having a six-foot wall, basically on the Carmel side, did not give them comfort, enough comfort that either something got built up and it was really only five foot six and people could peek over or whatever. They wanted to make sure that it was at least six foot eight so that there would be no privacy issues. And I agreed to do that.
So what you're saying is it's a six-foot masonry wall plus one more level of?
Yeah. Yeah, it will, I mean, it will look all integrated.
Yeah, so six eight?
Six eight is one thicken.
Okay. And then also,
Go ahead. I had something else back here.
Your landscape drawings look great. And there's a note on a question I have on one of the notes. It says, it shows a bridge going across Marsh Creek?
Yes.
And it says, "Future bridge by others."
Yes.
What do you mean by that?
It's my understanding that the Pin Brothers project is required to put that bridge in. Is a condition of their approvals and is a, is a part of the fee program like everyone else.
Okay, no, I was just clarifying, thank you. Any other questions?
I can't remember.
Okay, great, let's open, I mean, let's see if there's anyone in the audience who would like to come forward or have any comments?
Oh, sorry. While they're walking up, that's fine. Syntex Homes proposed the same front yard landscaping plan back when they did their project, oh, I'd say about five or six years ago. And they did the same thing where they offered their homeowners the opportunity to put in their own landscaping. And we have never received any complaints from anybody as far as that program not working. The landscaping was put in, there was a wording, and I was looking through my old files trying to find that wording. I know there was a condition that we put on the application and I can't, I couldn't find it in these.
You're talking about Monalena?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And I'll come up with that and we can put that same wording in as a condition for this project under the designer view or the tentative map, whichever way. But it has been done here in Brentwood and it has worked.
That was my, that's what I couldn't remember. I wanted to talk about the landscaping because you made it, I'm assuming what you're talking about doing is establishing escrow funds for the front yard landscaping and giving a credit to the, okay.
Okay, sorry, Joan, go ahead.
Hello again. Joan Douglas, I'm Brentwood resident. And I know that you're probably by now almost sick of hearing the word creek because it's, we've had a lot of these projects come forward all at once. I know it's kept us quite busy. And I'll make this really, really brief. Marsh Creek, well, Marsh Creek watershed, as you all know, we're in that watershed. The four creeks and such. Marsh Creek itself is a very special and unique feature. If you don't know, its headwaters are on the eastern side of Diablo, Mount Diablo. From Morgan Territory, it flows all the way through the heart of Brentwood, all the way out to Oakley through, into the delta. So it's not this, it's not a flood control channel per se, just only a flood control channel. It's not a little creek stream trickle or anything. It's vital, it has historic merits. And so that's why we're very concerned about the health and the quality and the vitality of this creek. It's a tremendous resource, all of the creeks are, and this is the one special one. Pulte, I just want to say, I know that I've only been in Brentwood since 2001, but just their developments, Creekside Park is one that we always refer to as a model. They did a fantastic job with that. It's an amazing thing. They've proven themselves that they can really relate to the environment and really incorporate that into their, into their designs. On this particular design, I do like, on Carmel Estates, I do like that they have some of the houses that do face the creek. They don't turn their back on the creek and I think that's very, very positive on that. I do have a comment to make to, to the developer with due respect. It's not piecemeal. What we're doing is, we can't change the whole creek at once. And granted, a lot of development has gone a long time before us and things have happened and we're just now learning like, oh my gosh, we have to do something. What we're worried about, and which is in my letter too, is that Pin Brothers, just directly opposite this development, Carmel Estates, has already approved and agreed and are putting in a two-stage channel. They are developing it. There has been some go-arounds and some discussions and collaboration and such, but it is moving forward on that. Our concern is that if this side doesn't also step up to the plate, that whatever they do, especially with a formal fenced-in detention basin, will preclude or restrict that enhancement or that restoration. Brentwood is also installing fish ladders down at the treatment plant down, further down almost into Oakley. It's to help, to recreate or to restore the historic spawning for salmon to get them upstream. If the health of the stream is not there, they will not come or it just won't be attractive to them or it could be detrimental to them. Restoration or revegetation of the creek, as we've identified in some of these letters, you have to understand that you can't just put a tree up on the bank and hope that it gives shade. We have very hot summers here, we have even very warm springs most of the time. And so to create, to make that stream or that creek healthy and to attract and to make it livable for species and such, and to make it attractive even to go down and be around, you need to create an environment that will create shade, create a nice environment for that. So again, we just hope that you consider the requests that this creek should be looked at. And we aren't doing it piecemeal, it's just as they come. And we hope that all developers that do have projects along creeks will be, will be required to do such or will have to take into consideration creekside planning. And just really quick, in the letter I did attach, I did attach as attachment A, goals, policies and objectives. These are things in the actual adopted plans that Brentwood has adopted. The general plan as well as the Parks Trails and Recreation Master Plan. So it's not just recommendations, but those identified about restoring creeks and how important they are, those are adopted policies by the city of Brentwood. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Joan. Anyone else would like to come forward? Why don't you go ahead in the blue shirt? Just state your name.
My name is Crystal Hackle and I live at 1250 Alberta Parkway, just on the corner of Alberta and Carmel, bordering the north side of the project. And I just want to actually thank the folks at Pulte for being so willing to work with the neighboring communities. Back when they received their RGMP allocation in August, I expressed a concern about the potential economic decline of my neighborhood with the placement of a large brick wall going alongside that. And they came up with a wonderful solution to landscape it with a walkway and a very attractive brick wall. In addition, they have also worked with us to provide more lighting because we do have some issues with loitering, with the street being dark where it is now. So my request would just be that you would approve the design along the northern perimeter of the property as they proposed it. And that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bailey?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, I'm Bailey Neff. I'm the president of Minnesota Rentals. Pulte does have outstanding reputation of doing very good work and they are the number one at home builder if I read things correctly in the magazines. The one thing about being an applicant though, the planning department is made me very well aware of what the requirements are. The required site notice is that you have a double-sided sign on all streets of the project. Pulte has had a single-sided sign parallel to Minnesota Avenue since December of 2005. It's still there. It does not notify the public of the issue that's going to be discussed. Neither does it give it the time that the planning commission is going to hear it, whether it's the date or the time. It's a generic sign that does not meet the compliance of the required site notice. With respect to my mailing, I didn't receive the letter as I mentioned to you before, neither did Minnesota Rentals. And during the break, I checked with four residents of Randy Way. They did not receive the letter. I don't know if you know the people on Randy Way, but they're very proactive. And by their absence tonight, something's gone wrong with the mailing. And so we need to look into that and I'll try and pursue that tomorrow. With respect to the planning area, I'd like you to refer to ordinance 664. This enacted Chapter 17.47, it's PD 26. enacted chapter seventeen point four-seven, it's PD twenty-six, uh, Plan Development twenty-six Zone, and you'll see that on page five-two-seven, the item number is seventeen, Planning Area sixteen, and that cannot be broken up, is defined as one planning area, and you can refer to the page on five-two-seven, and then refer to page five-three-seven, it has PA sixteen, Neff slash Beederman, and then it has, uh, the statistical information concerning that, and so that is a, a single planning area, and by this ordinance, uh, by the city ordinance, it requires the two properties to be, uh, considered as one. With respect to, um, the actual staff report, I'd like to review that with you, and so if we can just start on this front page, the date of notice, I think something is wrong with the mailing, because I didn't get it, and the people on Ri- uh, Randy Way have not received, or some of the people on Randy Way have not received it anyway. Going to page three, under the background, your second item is construction roadway improvements including a forty-two inch water line in Norolee Road, a fiber optic extension in Luntry Way. I don't know if you're aware of it, but the people on Randy Way do not have water in sewer, they would like to have the city council consider reallocating these funds from Nor- Norolee Road, which I believe is going to be Oakley, to helping or, uh, paying for the sewer in Randy Way and perhaps water also. With respect to going down to the analysis, rezon, it says the development standard include a hundred and two single-family detached homes and four affordable duet homes, and, I don't know exactly how that works, because there's seven thousand, ten thousand, twenty thousand square foot lots, and so that's, uh, something that needs to be worked out, and I, I've tried to talk to the, uh, planning department this afternoon, really didn't get explanations on this. If you go to the very bottom of the last paragraph, the last line says, "Square foot lots and a twenty-foot minimum setback on a tw- twenty thousand square foot lot." This has been an issue with the Randy Way residents, and, um, I've gathered, uh, the petition signatures of a hundred and sixty-two people, with that, uh, they are concerned about the setback there. If we look at, uh, there, there's some things I really don't agree with, but in the interest of time, I'm not trying to go, I'm not going to go into that. If we go to page five, at the bottom of the second paragraph, it says, "The adjacent property is submitted as subdivision map for eight lots with access direct, directly out to Minnesota. Because of the slope of this adjacent property, the owner may not be able to provide sewer access from Minnesota Avenue and must connect to the sewer lines on the project." We've submitted drawings, we haven't been questioned about this, so I don't think that's really an issue. If we drop, drop down to Residential Growth Management Program, uh, in the first paragraph, it talks about ten lots, in the second lot talks about nine lots, and then, uh, the last, uh, portion of the second paragraph under that subheading says, "Ninety-three market rate lots and four affordable unit lots," that's ninety-seven, and then if you flip to page one, page six, up in the upper right-hand corner, it's a hundred and two lots. Here again, I asked the staff about this, uh, Kwame is with Affordable Housing, he didn't know what the details were, and Jeff and Eric Matheny's were not available. Continuing on, uh, to the recommendations on page seven, uh, one is pass resolution oh-six-five-two approving the declaration of mitigated monitoring plan, I objected that, I've written, uh, objection to it, and I'd like to spend some time going through it if the chair feels that we have some time. Number two, uh, pass the resolution oh-six-twenty-six recommending that the city council approve, uh, RZ oh-six-oh-two, I objected that because, uh, I'm part of Planning Area sixteen, and we haven't been able to have any, uh, conversation about this. With respect to passing resolution, uh, oh-six-two-seven approving the tentative map, uh, I objected that because of access, uh, on Minnesota going to the south, which is a, an issue in the, uh, Environmental Impact Report. I don't know if it's something to go through on the, uh, Planning Commission resolutions, in the interest of time, should we do it or skip over, I, I really would like to have this matter continued.
Well, I, I, I think it's great to hear your comments, and, um, I think you just have a couple more minutes, and then we're going to move on.
Okay. With the, uh, mitigated na- negative declaration, I think there's a follow-up with the mailing, and therefore I do not think that this can really be, uh, considered to be circulated, and, uh, the statement that the environmental document for the, has been circulated, I don't think is correct either. On, uh, Plan Resolution oh-six-twenty-six, uh, it's the, uh, uh, notification, I'd like to go into the, uh, mitigated ne- negative declarations, and this is, uh, on page fifty-two, it's transportation circulation, and it has to do with traffic, and if we go through this, we come to page fifty-five, table two, and it says Minnesota Avenue, A Street, and they don't have the information available for the traffic flow. If we go to page fifty-six, it's the top of the page three, it's Project Trip Generation, and you look at the map, could we have the map up there, Jeff, of the, uh, tentative map?
When you look at this, most of the traffic, from this port will go onto Street A, this will go on to Street A, all these buildings will go on to Street A, half of this section here, these, these will go on to Street A, and some of these will go on to Street A, add it up, there are seventy-four lots that are going to be going out on Street A.
And with that, if you want to say seventy-two, seventy-four, whatever, number of lots is about seventy percent of the traffic, if you look at table three, Project Trip Generation, that puts a lot of traffic out there. Now, if we drop down to table four, map location A two, Saint James Track, which is the one that we're applying for, they recognize that as being there. On table five, uh, they're still working on that with the, uh, lack of really having a defined, uh, traffic on table five, and what I s- really am concerned about and object to is, we don't know what is really taking place on page sixty, under D, the Traffic Impact Analysis, assess the Site Accessibility and Internal Circulation of the Proposed Project, and then it's Site Access. If you drop down, there's a bullet there, it says designate a seventy-five foot southbound left turn lane with a sixty-foot taper on Minnesota Avenue to A Street, no one knows what that is, and that is a severe primary objection that I have to the report, to the impact report, because I don't know how it's going to affect me with my development, uh, of ten-sixty Minnesota Avenue. That's been a quick synopsis, I...
Great.
Sorry if I've gone too fast, but I hope you followed it, are there any questions?
Thank you.
My request is that this matter be continued in the time.
Great, thank you. With that being said, before the next speaker, I just have a few questions for, um, Engineering, Damian and Jeff. I guess, uh, the first one to Paul regarding the, uh, traffic circulation on that road, i- is it a problem and is it conditioned to where you can have control on it? As far, I mean, the, the number of homes?
We're talking about Road A, I believe it was?
Correct.
A Street, excuse me.
Correct.
We previously, in the beginning of the staff's presentation, we'd indicated that we were going to, or there was a desire to close Street A off from Minnesota, there'd be no access from Street A to Minnesota, so the subdivisions' access points would be on the Carmel Parkway, and Carmel Parkway and Minnesota Avenue will be signalized, so from a traffic flow standpoint, I don't believe that there's going to be any concern from the traffic generated from these lots.
Okay, great, and the next question to Heidi and Jeff is, uh, the zoning ordinance six-six-four, isn't the rezon taking care of that, that Bailey had mentioned about, um, keeping the lot all as one and not splitting it? Um, i- i- as far as the, of the rezon, we're actually rezoning if, if I'm understanding that correctly?
Yeah, the, 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 uh, development standards would also benefit Mr. Neff, um, because he's within Planning Area sixteen, if he opts similar to any of the other developers when he comes in, if he wants to create a new planning area with different standards, he can do that.
Okay, and then, uh, Damian, as far as the noticing?
I, I actually have a response for that, I'll pass around to you, this is a list, um, apparently Christie does our notice, I have a copy of the notice that was sent out, and all of Randy Way, she, um, this is she was brought to her attention, she checked, and all Randy Bowsides have been noticed, as well as Mr. Neff are on the list.
Okay.
And Mr. Neff was provided with a copy of this earlier today.
Okay, and it, you know, if this whole item went forward and everything was passed, that Bailey and all the neighborhoods could go to the city council and appeal it as well, is that correct?
That's correct, the, uh, tentative map, if approved tonight, has a ten-day appeal period, uh, the rezoning will go on, um, and needs to be approved by the city council.
Okay. Great, and then Damian, you don't see any illegal loopholes about a noticing paper, board signage, anything of that nature?
Not at this time.
Yeah. Okay, is there anyone out in the audience that would like to speak?
Rich Walkling, Natural Heritage Institute, um, in the documents that I alluded to previously and in the, uh, attachment to Joan's letter, the policies that she referred to, Brentwood again has repeatedly established its desire and its obligation to restore, uh, Marsh Creek, and what all those policies really boil down to is the desire that Marsh Creek be safe and healthy. This particular reach of Marsh Creek currently is neither safe nor healthy, the banks are extremely steep and dangerous, and, uh, the lack of, uh, trees and the lack of shading, um, both deprive the creek of habitat nutrients, and the lack of shading, uh, warms the creek and, uh, kills fish, if you remember, uh, last summer there was a massive fish kill in Marsh Creek. The solution to both of these problems is to widen the creek and set back the banks, uh, in that way you have more gradual banks, which, uh, are safer for children to get down into the creek in, uh, and then with the excess capacity, uh, you can still convey the flood and plant trees in the channel, uh, and in this way you can avoid having to have a fence and a sign up at the top telling people to stay out. This is exactly the sort of thing that is going on at Penn Brothers currently, that this commission had the wisdom to, uh, condition that development to do. Also, uh, in regard to Commissioner Cushing's comments earlier regarding, uh, standard guidelines for those developments that are coming up on creeks, uh, we fully support that, uh, and we say that in light of the fact that over the next five years, this commission will see developments on over two miles of marsh and sand creek, that's over half of the remaining stretches of creek that restoration is possible on. Every developer who appears before you will probably say it doesn't make sense on my property, my property's too small, I have too many constraints, so on and so forth, uh, but the opportunity is available to you to either restore these remain, these two miles of creek in the next five years, or condemn them to remain in their, uh, unhealthy and unsafe conditions. In light of those comments, we ask that you not approve this vesting tentative map because it prevents the widening of Marsh Creek in this restoration, condemns it to remain, uh, unsafe and unhealthy, and it's inconsistent with, uh, what this, uh, commission, uh, conditioned, uh, the Penn Brothers to do immediately opposite on the right bank, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I think it's Sam's, I'll go, go ahead.
My name is Ed Lynch, I live at, on Randy Way, right at the end, we're in Marsh Creek, where, it stops at Marsh Creek, in other words, um, I did receive my notice, and all my neighbors did too, that I talked to at least. Setbacks are fine as far as I'm concerned, the six-foot-eight, uh, fence, we wanted that, so the, the property's going to be a little higher on the other side for, 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 uh, flood control, not flood control, uh, what do you call it? It's built up higher so you won't be in a flood plain, and it, with the six-foot fence, it could look right in the back of our property, so we're really happy about that. I did see a sign on Minnesota, it's been there forever. Marsh Creek is a flood control thing, before, before they, uh, they made it a flood control, it would flood every winter, I talked to people that lived there before, I, I've been there for thirty years, and, uh, it used to flood all the time before they put it in. I, uh, I don't know how you'd wide, widen the, uh, the creek all the way up and down the bank, because you do have private properties, and, uh, um, it just doesn't seem like it'd be feasible to me, and trees in the middle of the, the creek would, would impede the flow of the water and make it flood again. On, uh, the, uh, the west side of Marsh Creek, I've always thought that they, they designated an equestrian trail, I don't know whether that's changed or not, and, uh, anyway, I'm, I'm happy with Polte, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to come forward?
Thank you, Pat Satella, resident of Brentwood, I'd like to start by thanking, uh, thanking Roger Mullett and Roger Miller for coming to our Friends on Marsh Creek Watershed meeting in January of this year. The Friends on Marsh Creek Watershed is a community group based mostly of the residents of Brentwood and Oakley, and one of Concord, uh, it's not an NHI group, it is in fact a community group. Mr. Miller said that, um, this is a development that Brentwood would be proud of, he called it extra-special. As a resident of Brentwood, I find this development neither extra-special nor one that I can be proud of. Once again, we're looking at the creek and environmental quality of an area is of marginal value to a community, I'm a member of this community, and I find it of very high value to myself, to my family, and to my friends, and to my community. Mr. Miller talked about how he worked with the neighbors to the north, he worked with the neighbors to the south, but he neglected to mention the neighbors to the east, the neighbors to the east are Marsh Creek and Penn Brothers. Uh, this council, or I'm sorry, this, this commission actually has requests and is going through, through with a restoration and a two-stage channel with the Palmea Development done by Penn Brothers. Mr. Miller says that it can't be done in his parcel, I'm sorry, that is not true, he calls it a piecemeal approach, I'm sorry, that is not true, it would segue perfectly with the Penn Brothers development. Penn Brothers has taken the lead in this, and they are showing that you can do a two-stage channel, they have shown that you can put trees along the bank, and it does not increase flood con- uh, flood, does not decrease flood control capabilities, if you need proof of this, just go to Creekside Park area, which I know Polte is familiar with since they did Creekside Park. I, I, I think it's very important that, uh, we, we look at this creek as a natural resource and as a community amenity. Mr. Miller also stated that he is, he is working with the city, he's doing what the city wants. Well, the city has made very clear what they want, in Appendix Ten of the Parks Trails and Recreation Master Plan, they recommend the following design for the Carmel Estates parcel, that the new channel cross-section should include a two-stage channel and gradual slopes, as, um, Mr. Walkling said, this would make the creek a wonderful place and a safer place as well. But I, I don't see why we are requiring Penn Brothers to do a two-stage channel and a restoration, and we're not, and we would not also have Polte Brothers or, uh, Polte Homes do the same thing. It's been spelled out, they have done nothing to satisfy the creek restoration requirements in either the general plan, the Parks Trails and Recreation Plan, or the Creek Trails and revegetation master plan, and I think that we need to, uh, follow through with this and, uh, have Brentwood fulfill its vision that it showed in these plans, thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else?
Ralph Strauss, nine oh-six Myers Court in Lion Groves, just to the north of this project, I just wanted to, uh, come up to say, um, the sign is up, I'm not in the notice area, but I saw the sign, and so I asked the question, found out about the meeting. I'm very happy to see the improvements to the south side of Carmel, we've needed them for a long time, it would be a good improvement to the area. Signal will be excellent, the median down Minnesota will be very good, and the park is very welcome addition to the community there. And just for clarification, Jeff mentioned it, but Campanillo was the, the Sentex project that did the front yard landscaping, it was very successful, and if you drive through that neighborhood, you can see how nice all of the front neighborhoods turned out in that area. Thanks.
Great, thank you, Ralph. Is there anyone else? Is there anyone else? Okay.
Motion to close public hearing.
I'll second that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, passes five zero. Okay, so tonight we have a couple of items. I mean, the rezone, tentative subdivision map, negative deck, and design review. So there's four items here. Let's kind of go, you know, each person kind of go through all the items, any issues that they see. Jim, you want to go first?
Yes. I don't have any problem with the rezone. The design review, I really have got to hand it to Pulte. I enjoyed, I mean, we're talking about saving the best to last and it's not to demean any of the other projects that have come before, but the overall quality, I enjoy the fact of it being a gated community. I think it really does offer something that is not, you know, currently, well, the city's not currently available, but it does provide what I would consider to be a step up. I would support the issuance in regards to landscaping. I think it's a great idea. Quite frankly, my concern always on something like that is I still have people in my neighborhood after two years that don't have anything in the backyard, you know? So it's like, that's always a concern and obviously you've got something that'll stipulate that there's a reasonable period of time for them to do something. If they don't, then you come in and accomplish it. I think that's great. The wall, the detailing on the gates, the access point, I was very much concerned with the issue over on Minnesota, but that seems as though that's being taken care of. I did have negative deck, I don't remember if I had that. The tentative map approval, and I do have a problem relative to the creek issuance because I'm struggling with the fact that we clearly have got a project going on that's been approved on one side of the creek, which is this is the way to go. And then we've got, on the other side, we're saying, no, we don't have to do that. That's not necessary. And that's something that I don't see any, it's just interesting that we should have this all happening on exactly the same street, so to speak. You know, what's going on on one side of the creek is one element and what's happening on the other side is something completely different. And so that does concern me. And I'd like to quite frankly have perhaps a little bit more resolution because it appears as though there's some conflict in and amongst the parking rec, what has been approved as opposed to what currently is before us. And I'm trying to kind of balance those two out, so.
Okay, Art?
The first thing I want to comment on is that the thirty-foot height restriction that we have in this planned development, I seem to recall that over the past years, so this issue has come up a few times and we've always, it's been a matter of policy that we go ahead and not exceed thirty feet. And regardless of what was implied or was, how it was addressed, thirty feet was the high limit on these, on the past subdivisions that we've approved. So I don't think we should go ahead, even though that we have an instance where there's one that, one area that does have, that does exceed thirty feet, I think that's an exception to the rule. And I'm in favor of keeping it at thirty feet. With that being said, the, I have no issues, I have no issues with the negative declaration. I have no issues with the rezone. The tentative subdivision, knowing that, excuse me, knowing that we have a new list of conditions over here, one of the things I'd like to amend when we make the motion is number eleven should include a height, a height limit of six feet eight on the Masonry, excuse me, on the Masonry wall. Also, on fifteen, why could we not amend condition number fifteen relative to what we're talking about with Marsh Creek and put a condition in there that we, that this particular part of Marsh Creek be developed as a, I mean, we can, I don't have the words yet, but basically condition it so that we can get Marsh Creek to where we're, where the audience, how the audience is talking, how Jim's talking, and how some of us feel about turning Marsh Creek into more than just a conduit for water. And those are the only things that I have relative to the tentative subdivision. As far as the, as far as the design review goes, I have two conditions I want to, that I want to talk about. First off, we should have a condition in there relative to the front yard landscaping, how we address that. And second, Russ had brought up about the garage in the duets, and I think if we're, if we're going to go ahead and address a reconfiguration like that, we make it to the satisfaction of the community development director. I have two questions on the elevations of Plan Three, the left elevation of Plan Three. It seems to me that that wall is pretty vacant. And the same goes for the, and this seems to follow through on all of the Plan Three elevations. And at the same time, the elevation, the left elevation on Plan Four, which is a two-story, has a considerable amount of open area on there with no belly banding or anything like that to kind of break it up. So I'd like to think in terms of a condition that can address those two.
I think that's a condition already made by Jeff.
Is it Jeff?
Belly banding? Yes.
Okay, so that should, that could conceivably take care of the left elevation on Plan Four.
Yeah, it should be on the designer view resolution. That's where that's at.
Yeah, I'd like to just interject real quick that, you know, belly banding has always been for two-story homes. So maybe in this particular situation, you know, the fronts of the gable end treatments are just carried around to the sides.
So I thought you were talking about the two-story home.
Yeah, I am. Plan, it is in there. I missed that. Number six.
That's only for the two-story homes.
Which is Plan Four.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I know that.
So in situations like this, before what we've done when we have large blank walls, we've taken the trim up in the gable end, the treatment, and taken it and wrapped it all the way around so it matches the front of the house. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
So that could be a condition.
Yeah. So that could be condition number seventeen for Plan Three. And other than that, that's my comments.
Okay, great. Julie, would you like to go next?
Sure. I thought the package was very well laid out and easy to understand. Overall, I really like the project. I think it does add a little sense of, you know, changes it up a little bit in Brentwood in regards to development. I like the idea of giving the homeowner the ability to basically design and landscape their front yard. And I'm glad that you brought down, or brought the height of the homes down to thirty feet just to keep with, you know, standard, stick with some of the requirements that we're trying to set, you know, or standard that we're trying to set here in Brentwood. Sorry, I'm getting a little punchy. What am I saying? I've got to make sure, check this out. Anyway, let me see. So yeah, my main issue is the height of the home. And in regards to Marsh Creek, right now, it basically looks like a ditch and to me, that's not really an inviting place to even for a park to go and enjoy. So I would like to see the developer do something just to enhance it, you know? If the developer on the other side of the streets doing, or on the other side of the stream is doing the same thing, or the creek, I think it'd be nice to enhance that area. So, you know, just looking at the pictures, it really isn't that appealing. So I guess we have a condition for that, is that correct? For the creek or to have?
Let's just hear everyone's opinion first because there might be someone that might disagree.
Okay.
And then we'll, when we get to the end, then we can talk about the condition.
Okay, so basically, I would approve the project, of course, on all the conditions that we've talked about and as well as the tentative subdivision map and the design review as conditioned and the negative declaration, you know, as long as we discuss a few of those items. That's all. Thank you.
Art? I mean, I.
Oh, I did it again. Russell.
That's five times.
And it's early. In the morning.
Yeah, early morning now. To start out with, I think Pulte has been in, or Antioch, you got me doing it, has been in Brentwood long enough that you're presenting the package that is, that meets almost all of our standards, the ones that have some question. Jeff has addressed in the condition of approval, which you have no problems with. This is going to be a beautiful, beautiful addition to Brentwood. There was an issue brought up with the thirty-five feet. I addressed it only because in the past, we have approved thirty-five feet in height just based on the planning commission's decision to do that. And plus, the code also allows thirty-five feet and some exceptions. I have no issues with thirty-five feet or the thirty feet. Pulte says they can bring this down to thirty feet. I have no desire to change staff's conditions regarding the thirty-feet limit. I think it's fine. The Minnesota entrance, I had a real problem with, having to work traffic backing out of that, the liabilities, the turnaround. I would thought it should be an exit only, but this has been addressed because you're going to address it in the condition, condition number eighteen, so it's going to be corrected on its own, so I have no issue there. The conditions regarding the side loading and banding, you've added a condition for that, that's going to be resolved. So you've resolved all the issues that I've identified and I think it's just a beautiful, beautiful project. As far as the creek, I love creeks. I love the, you know, I, it's not come up before in anything that we've had that I recall in the past year. This is something brand new to me anyway. And it's something I think we should learn more about, maybe in a workshop or something, so we're not sitting here listening to strange words that I may or may not understand what you mean. I don't know if I should, you know, if this creek is native and that's how it looks, maybe it should always stay looking that way. Maybe we shouldn't put trees down in the middle of it or wire it in. I don't know. I don't know. Did we make it this small or should we, you know? How did it get there? You know, are we messing with it by doing something to it? I don't know. So anyway, it's a subject that should be looked at further. I don't think it has, I'm not concerned with it in this project and I like the project.
My thoughts with the height, I think is right on, should stay at thirty feet. I liked Art's comments about the gable end treatments. One of the comments that I noticed was that they were short one plan, I mean, one lot for their swing garage. But I just wanted to point out though, looking at all the architecture, every single plan has garage back, house forward. So I don't know if it's really necessary to go ahead and make them do a swing just because every single house is garage back and our goal is to diminish the presence of the garage. And they've done that on every plan. And then, let's see here. I liked all the elevation except for the plan one, Spanish one. I think I mentioned that to the applicant. I don't know if it needs to be conditioned. Maybe just won't sell as much as the other ones. We'll find out. But let's see here, belly banding was conditions, that's great. The density transition was great. It was good to see gated community. There are other gated communities in Brentwood that work out great. Apple Hill, Pheasant Run. Let's see here. And then, so my issue regarding the park, I mean, the developer's actually done something here and put something there. We're not talking like they didn't try, they didn't do anything. You look at the deep detention basin, that deep detention basin has to go somewhere according to the C three. So does it make more sense to put it right in the middle of the development? Probably not. It probably makes more sense to put it near the creek. I mean, there are a lot of nice things that I'm seeing. It might not be exactly what everyone wants and I just want to read, you know, we're reading everyone's letters and thoughts and there's one I want to share from Craig Bronson so we can get all the different takes on this from landscape. Says the Parks and Recreation Department is supportive of the efforts in the creek and habitat restoration, has developed what we believe is a good working relationship with NHI and Friends of Marsh Creek. Our department has also requested assistance from NHI and Friends of Marsh Creek to help provide funding mechanisms for the city to accomplish the goals we share mutually. To date, they have not been able to provide funding assistance and as a result, expect the city to find a way to make developers do the required work as a condition of approval. As Director of Parks and Recreation, I'm concerned about the nexus requirement, making the case to require complete restoration efforts solely on the back of the developer. So I understand that we're trying to do a good thing here and we want to have a good thing, but I'm looking at the efforts of the developer, the things that they're providing, the shade structure, the houses facing the creek, the different areas, and I would approve it just the way it is. So those are my comments.
I'll go ahead and start the motion process. I'd like to make a resolution, we approve, make a motion that we approve resolution number zero six fifty-two regarding the mitigated negative declaration.
I'll second it.
Sorry.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, passes five zero.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve resolution number zero six twenty-six regarding rezone zero six zero two.
I'll second that. That's the rezone. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, passes five zero.
Okay. Now, I'd like to make a motion that we approve resolution number zero six dash twenty-seven, approving tentative subdivision map number eighty-three eleven, taking in note that we're approving the new conditions of approval that were handed to us earlier today with the following changes. I'd like to amend condition number eleven to specify that the Masonry wall shall be six feet eight inches in height. I'd like to, I'd like to amend condition number fifteen that states that the planning department direct the Park and Recreation Department to work with the developer to find some way to go ahead and make this section of Marsh Creek something that we've been talking about whereby we can go ahead and maybe start something relative to developing the creeks in this area and that the, that the final approval will be subject to, the final results will be subject to the approval of the community development director and the Parks and Recreation manager.
Yeah, I don't know if that's a clear enough direction, you know, that last part. Damian and Heidi and Jeff, is that something, is that giving you enough direction as to what we're asking?
I think that condition fifteen has to remain as ordered. You want to add some, add a new condition, you can't change that. That's there for specific reasons. That park, direct that park, that park, that's when you build by a certain number.
Okay.
You want to add some, I mean, you want to?
So I'd?
Thirty-one. Talk about adding more direction as far as how that park gets developed in relationship with the creek, then you need to add a, a new condition that reflects, or directs, or reflects that.
So I'd have to make condition thirty-one then, specific to Marsh Creek.
I think that would make more sense.
Okay.
Try and change this one out.
Okay. You, you see where I'm coming from, right?
Yes. If you could just bear with us a few seconds, we?
Okay.
See, my concern is how, is the overall development?
I know.
Do they own the creek?
No.
How can they mess with it? How can they build something they don't own?
Well, I think it's, I think it's consistent even with county regulations and desires instead.
If I may, there, there's a motion on the floor, and the motion should be limiting their discussion.
I'm just, so the chair, we did a quick consultation as to what it would take to accomplish what it is that they're asking. We were looking at perhaps squeezing the lot setbacks to, to get more area next to the creek, to maybe make additional second stage or creek improvements, but talking with Paul, the, one of the largest issues really is about getting the permitting to go into the creek bed. And the additional room, while you may have room for doing some of that, is still not addressing the whole issue of requiring the developer to go and get the Army Corps and different permitting.
In addition to that, the Contra Costa County Flood Control and Water Conservation District physically owns the creek and, and the right-of-way, which goes up within approximately ten, it appears to be ten or fifteen feet on either side of the bank, so that's another jurisdiction that we'd have to bring to them, except since they own the property, if they don't, if they did not feel like doing any improvements on this portion of the creek, they would have the veto power in which to say they didn't want to. So I don't know if this condition is as clear-cut or as easy to accomplish as, as perhaps we think it may be, just from the, the interaction of these other agencies involved. And if I'm not mistaken, I believe Penn Brothers, the work that they're doing on the creek was part of their environmental mitigation for their project, and that it was chosen in consultation with the Fishing Game, U.S. Fish and Wildlife, Army Corps of Engineers, who are some of the agencies that, someone would need to get a permit to do this work on the creek.
Okay, I guess I'll retract condition thirty-one then, and let my motion stand.
Okay, do we want to add, oh no, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'll second, I'll second.
Okay, we have a, a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
No.
Aye. No.
Okay, passes three two.
Okay. Now, that was without the condition on the park, right?
Right.
Okay.
Thirty-one, yeah. I'd like to make a motion that we approve Resolution Number Zero Six Twenty Eight regarding Design Review Number Zero Five Twenty.
Twenty-eight, I think.
What'd I say?
Oh, I said oh five twenty.
I did.
It's Resolution Oh Six Twenty Eight.
Oh Six Twenty Eight regarding Design Review Number Zero Five Twenty, with the following I think the consensus was that we were going to, we were not going to push the issue regarding the one additional side entry garage, so I would make one of the conditions that we delete number seven from the conditions. And then I would go ahead and make a new condition number fifteen that states that the developer will work with the individual homeowners regarding front yard landscaping, and will, will offer a credit to the homeowner to complete front yard landscaping if done within six months, otherwise, they will step in and complete landscaping themselves. That would be condition fifteen. Condition sixteen is that the developer will work with the Planning Department regarding the reconfiguration of the du, the garage in the duets, to the satisfaction of the Community Development Director. And number seventeen, you're going to have to help me with this, number seventeen is Plan Number Three, how, what do we call that?
It was just to carry the gable end treatments around the, the sides to match the front.
Okay.
That was condi, condition number seventeen, I think it was Plans Three and Four?
Just three, because?
Okay.
Four, four was covered in.
Okay. Plan, Plan Three to carry the gable end treatments at the front of the house, around the sides on all elevations.
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, passes five zero.
Okay.
Congratulations.
We have meetings.
So we got some more stuff.
Yeah. Let's get this out of the way. Let's see, this one.
So the next item is information reports from planners, transplan?
Meeting is this Thursday, the monthly meeting.
Okay. And then, Design Review Subcommittee that was canceled, I mean, there was, there was supposed to be one tomorrow, but it's been canceled, I mean, Thursday. And then Housing was canceled this week, and it's the following week, and same with Economic Development Redevelopment. So requests for future agenda items?
I'd like to bring up a, a question that revolves around the issue of the creeks. Some, you know, somewhere down the road, we've got to address this issue, and I don't quite know how we're going to tackle this then, if we're going to every, like, in this case, we don't have the right to go into the creek because of the Contra Costa Water District and the Corps of Engineers and all that, but is it something the Planning Department can look into that, to, to look at? And I'm just asking, because I don't know, that we start looking at how do we address the creeks and the restoration of the creeks to make them something that incorporates not only a, a pathway, but maybe not just a drop, but a?
I'd like, I'd like to follow up on that. This is such a big issue tonight, but it's not been an issue for the past year.
Yeah.
And I, we don't have enough information to make a real intelligent decision right now. Some shopping centers, they take a creek, put it through a great big pipe, and it goes underground, and you lose the creek altogether.
Right.
Some others, you want to widen. So I mean, I think there's too many variables that we don't understand before we can make mandate something.
So maybe a, a good thing to do would be to have a workshop, and also to discuss, I think it was also a critical issue, is the retention pond and how it affects the creek, because that, that's a huge issue, and that was a huge issue tonight on both projects, I think. So it's just as a workshop, you know, kind of talk about the plan, the design, the goals, the whole enchilada. I think that would be great.
I don't know, you can mandate something to, to work on somebody else's property that's not even on your, you know, so there's a whole lot of issues.
Or maybe we could do a mosquito abatement, you know, the health hazard of the retainage pond, so we can get rid of it.
Yeah.
Well, actually, it's my understanding they don't hold water longer than forty-eight hours in the C three areas.
Okay.
We took care of the mosquito problem.
And this one, you got to spend more, more, spend more time, more time, and you'd like to.
Okay, great. That'd be helpful.
I, I'd like to recommend if we were to do a workshop for Planning Commission and talking about the creeks, that at some point, we may want to have it, something that we would recommend up to the City Council for their considerations as well, because if it is something that we're going to start mandating these projects do, the financial aspect and the financial component of it will come, come into play, and that ultimately would?
The developer.
Be a policy and, and type of decision that the City Council would need to make.
Great. Okay. Okay, with that being said, the meeting is adjourned at one forty a.m.
No.
I mean, twelve forty.
I was going to say, is it already?
You can tell it's late.